Good evening. It's May 5th, 2025, 7:00 PM. The zoning board of appeals for the town of New Cana will come to order. Going to briefly explain how these meetings work. When we call your case, we ask that each presenter come up to the lectern, identify themselves in the property in question, state your request to the board, and identify the hardship and the reasons for the request. Remember, the hardship cannot be financial in nature. It runs with the land and is peculiar to your property. The board will then ask questions of you, after which you will sit down, and we will give those present a chance to speak. You will then be given an opportunity to answer any questions or some of your requests. We record the meeting, and they're also often attendees online, so everyone must speak into the microphone and state their name. The board will then go into business session, discuss, and make a decision. There are five voting members on the board, and it takes four positive votes to be granted a variance. Want to take attendance, starting with?
Joe present.
Tashin present.
Carter present.
Snyder present.
Book present.
Richard Kira, too, is absent tonight, so Chad Book is going to be seated for his seat. The first item on the agenda tonight is 26 Turner Hill Road. Zoning variance upon application of Richard Vale authorized Agent Ricardo Watson owners for a variance of sections 3.5, 28.2, to allow construction of a two-story addition 18 feet from the side property line in the two-acre zone at 26 Turner Hill Road, map 39, block 105, lot 1. Are the mailing receipts in?
Yeah.
There's a green button on your microphone. Turn it on if not on.
Hi, good evening. My name is Richard Vale, the architect for Carla and Ellie Watson. I have Ellie is with me tonight and kindly brought his laptop because I didn't have mine with me, but he has the drawings and photos of the property on the laptop. And I guess there's a way we can link into the. No, yeah. So that's what we need to do. I'm not sure if we can, because I have the green cards and the hard copies of the. So what we're proposing is a bedroom on the second floor and a utility, laundry utility room on the first floor. That would be off the west side of the house, the back of the house. Currently, there's a, there is a utility room. It's smaller. And when, once we get up on the screen, we'll show you the site plan. You can see the footprint of what exists versus what we're proposing. We do need to make it a bit bigger. What we're proposing is a 12 by 12 addition that would be sufficient for the second floor bedroom. We, our, our plan is to, to not go any further than the addition we previously got granted a variance on a few years back. And so the proposed addition would more or less align with the this, the amount that it would project off the house. The second floor would, you'll see on the plans, we can't deliver out a few feet. So, but the actual physical footprint would align with the, what we previously obtained a variance on when we went for a, an addition kind of off the south side of the house. The, the site is, is undersized and it's a very odd shaped lot. The setbacks are such that the, the front and the rear are already eclipsing into the existing house. So we have a previously built house that was already non-complying. And really, the only way to make the addition happen would, would be to ask for a variance. An addition of any size would require an area variance, given the existing location of the existing house and the, the kind of the constraints of the, the site that we're dealing with. We also have some limitations on the wetlands, so there's really no, you know, real option to go to the south of the property because we're, we've got a line of wetlands on that side of the property.
Do you have a plan that superimposes the new proposal over the existing one that was allowed?
On the site plan, we, we have it, but the, yeah, I guess I don't have it on the actual floor plan. But the site plan, you can see the, there's a hatched in area that shows the proposed expansion. And the, the existing is that, that line that's non-hatched that where it bumps out.
Is that line could, could we have on the screen or?
Yeah. Just, I'm pulling it up.
I have a hard copy of it here, too.
Just one hard copy. Do you have five?
I just one with me.
Let's pull it up on the screen.
Okay.
Everyone can see.
Yeah. Then, yeah, you can zoom into the, where the issue is. So you can see the. Sprint. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So, yeah, so this, this hatched area, that kind of L shape, is the proposed addition. You can see this, this line is the, the existing, the utility room that jogs out.
So that line is not the existing variance, the dark line is the existing house.
Yes, the dark line is the existing house. That's a utility room that's currently there. We have a, I can show you the picture of it, too.
And with the existing variance, what did that do? Did that straighten the back line out on the house?
We had a variance, it was for, we, we put this addition here on, and that was what the, our variance was based on. That was kind of the further out. So with this proposal, we're lining up with that, that projection. So it's kind of the same as what we previously got. But we are also proposing a cantilever portion on the second floor. We'll cantilever two feet out.
So the cantilevered portion is the slack line?
Correct, right.
In the existing variance, you did everything that was allowed under that?
Yeah, the existing variance, we built what we were granted.
In the variance before that, because I believe there was two prior variances on this.
Yeah, there's one, a previous owner had done one that was, they're basically tearing the house down and building a much larger house. They, they were granted many years before. That was.
Yeah, there was, but there was two variances before we bought the property and did the renovation. Each, each two before were never acted on.
That's fair.
So the prior two, do you have those? Like, is this more or less than the prior two?
This is 3,000 square feet less than the prior two.
Yeah, it was a much bigger, it was basically a new, much larger house.
5,500 square feet, I think, was what was approved in the second variance before we bought it.
And if, so is one variance you built, two prior variants from prior owner that were never acted on?
No.
Right.
So as part of this variance, do you want to give up those prior to? Or are those always going to be sitting here like on the title?
Oh, I didn't even know they were still valid.
Yeah, we're giving up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have no intention of doing what they, they were doing.
Yeah, they were tearing the whole house down and rebuilding it, what, larger house?
At that point.
But we, we kept it and just kind of worked with it.
Yeah, because currently those, they're still various. They're, they're running with the land unless, you know, you wanted to forego them. So I guess this would be like the fourth variant sitting on your title.
Yeah, I would just forego the first two.
Yeah.
I have no interest in them. Those are by previous owners, no connection to me. I don't even know where the plan or where to start with any of that would be. So I would just, if that's a possibility, just to get rid of those.
Okay, why don't you continue? Unless, do you have a question else?
No, not for now.
Okay, why don't you go on and keep going? I was just trying to place this in my mind because I remembered.
Yeah.
The prior.
So we can.
So just to reference, the other two variances are from 2005, and then there was one in 2016.
That's us.
Oh, that was, that was you. 2005 and 2016 variances were the ones that were never acted on.
2005 and 2016.
That were done by previous owners.
Do you have a copy of those?
They're in the record. The, like approvals, the, the plans are not in the record. They're available online in our online file system, but they're not part of this record.
Okay, if we want to look at those, we could pull those up and bring them into the record, or do they have to be introduced to the record?
As long as the applicant's okay with them being added into the record in the meeting, I would say that's fine. But it would have to be done during the public hearing portion.
You're okay with that, right?
Yeah, I'm part of that.
Okay.
My attorney's okay with that.
Okay, if you can go on, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yes, this is just to give you a reference. This is a photo of the, the back of the house, the west side. This is that, that smaller utility room I was mentioning. That, so basically, we would, we would take that down and construct a, or, you know, probably as part of the foundation, but the, the walls would come down, and then we'd build the, the addition would be two-story, would kind of start from that, from this edge, and it'd be 12 feet wide. So it'd be probably about three feet or so wider than what you see here. And it would come out a little bit further to align with the wing that we built a few years back.
And the height, would it be consistent with the height of this house now? Would it be higher than the height?
It would be consistent with the height of, you know, with this, this eve line would be, we're, we're going to align with that. And then there'll be a gable roof, and I can, if we can get that up on the screen to show you.
It's not touching.
Yeah, I keep, I haven't touched.
It's a 2017 rig.
Right. So get that. I guess I sort of click on that. We go to the elevation. Just the plan. Oh, yeah. There's something.
Yeah.
Scroll that, okay. Now let's see if we can get her out and rotate it. Sorry for the, my technical inability here. But the well, again, sideways, this is the, the proposed addition there, so you can see the in on the south elevation. So essentially, we're lining up with the, the previous addition with the exception of this cantilever that would, would project out another few feet.
Can you scroll down so we can see the?
Yeah. This is the, that's the addition we did a few years back. And let's see if our proposed.
I can get it.
So the existing house, it's north on, yeah, existing house on north. I guess the garage is the closest point to the property line, but the house, the northwest corner is the closest point. Now, what's the closest point?
Yeah, I think the, oh, on the house, yeah, it would be the northwest corner is, is the closest, yeah. And obviously, the garage is, is even closer. It's all attached.
And would the cantilever project past the existing line of those two buildings on northwest and southwest corner? Or is the candy lever?
No.
Parallel with those.
It's pretty much parallel with it. Yeah, the cantilever doesn't go further than that, that line.
So the actual building's a little further behind that line on the first floor?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's back, yeah.
Chad or Jessica.
Um, I, the only question I have is when you were turning off the variances, I was just reviewing the statutes. I'm not sure we have power to tie that to a new variant.
I don't think we can condition it, but they can give it up.
Yes, I, I haven't seen anything that's supposed to give it up per se, but I'd be hesitant to.
Yeah, I don't think we can require.
I would say it's something they shouldn't do spontaneously.
Well, we can't require it, but they can, they can forego them.
They should think it through.
So there's no inspiration on those earlier ones? Sorry.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm happy to share my screen and show you the previous ones if that's helpful to the board.
I think that would be.
Okay, could you stop sharing? So this is the 2005 variances. My understanding is the hatch does the existing on that plan.
Okay, that looks about right.
And then this is the 2016 variance, so there was this whole addition, this whole addition. I, you know, none of those were constructed.
So the 2016 one was causing the addition.
Can you remember?
2005?
This is, this is 2016. The previous one was 2005.
The 2016 was, was in the frame garage, the north.
Do you want me to go back to the 2005?
And in the hash area to the south of the building?
Correct. So in the 2016 one, the hashed are the new proposals. Neither of those are built.
Okay. In the 2005?
This is the 2005, which I think in this one, the hatch was the existing.
So they were essentially, I mean, it was going significantly further, significantly closer to the property line before was approved.
It looks like this is 13.8. Correct.
So they were essentially squared up with the corner of the garage now, this, this line here. So almost the same area they approved 13, or we approved almost 13.8 feet.
Correct, if I recall correctly, the, and I mean, we have it in the file. I'm pretty sure the 2005 variance, they were specific that the variance was conditioned to this specific development plan, which is why we felt it was just better to have them come before you all again.
I mean, that would make sense, but I'm, I'm just saying from the standpoint of they obviously found a hardship then to allow something closer than what's being asked for now.
So this one up now is the 2016?
No, this is the 2005.
So this was the 2005, and a variance was granted for, to be, is that 13.5 feet?
13.8 or 6.
Okay. And currently, they're asking for 18, although maybe the square footage, the footprint may not be identical in terms of how much is that close to the line.
Maybe they were adding a
I think there was more.
Pretty big area here that's squaring it in, that whole new area.
And we're.
Square it in.
Also closer than 13 feet or within?
Yeah.
Maybe that's.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. And then want to go to 2016 again? Sorry, I feel like I might have Tom just asked, like, which one's better? I keep flipping back and forth. And there they squared it off along the backside of the garage.
And you just zoom a little bit again? Yeah, just a little bit. Thanks.
And they also squared off the little alcove or whatever you want to call it.
This is it.
Yeah. Well, this is new.
Yeah.
They squared this off here.
No, this is, this is what they're posing now.
Yeah, I'm saying that was squared off.
Yeah.
And that's plain.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to call, if you face the house on the left-hand side, there's like a grass area. I call it some discussion. This was like a long time ago, but on ledge or stone or something in the grass here, what's? It was like reserved for your stuff. Like, I can't recall what that area was.
We were going to bury a propane tank.
That's what the area was.
And we just thought that, we just got some smaller tanks and just didn't bury it because we decided there's a lot of ledge where we were going to bury them.
I'm with the discussion of the ledge, okay?
So we just opted for a small system instead of burying a whole thing.
Does anyone want to go through plans more or have more questions or their proposal?
I don't.
I think I'm clear.
I interrupted your presentation a lot. I want to just run it quickly through end to end. Sorry, I'll try not to. Just so we can see what, what you're doing here.
Again.
So do you want us to start with like the site plan or the interiors or?
Why don't you start with the site plan?
Here we are. Yeah, so, so what we're proposing is, again, that, that hash L-shaped area is the, the proposed new footprint. And this, this portion is the existing utility room that is going to, we, we may be able to salvage some of the foundation, but we're going to take the, the walls and roof off to, to construct the, what will now be a two-story addition. That's just a one-story building room. And, yeah, as I mentioned, we're going to line up with, this is a previous addition we did that we received the variance on, so that the walls would line up with each other, with the exception of the second floor cantilever. We come out a couple of feet further to the west. That kind of, you know, makes the bedroom happen, but we, we want to try to ask for as little as we needed to make this. It's really, the priority is getting a bedroom for their second child. And so, yeah, as I mentioned, there's hardship wise, we're looking at a, a very odd shaped lot. And the house was constructed, I assume, prior to the zoning regulations. And so we're, we have a house that is existing, not conforming. So really, the only way to get this, to get anything to happen is to, even if we ask for an inch, we'd be needing a variance for this to happen. Because you can see the setbacks, the, the rear yard is, is into the house and as is the front yard. And then, and we also are challenged by the, the wetland boundaries. Yeah, so this is the first floor. You could see we've got a laundry pantry space approximately 12 feet wide. And then it's, yeah, nine, nine foot seven. You can see it lines up with the, this is the, to the, that's part of the, the previous addition that we built a few years ago. And so we're basically lining those walls up. And then this, this line is supposed to read dash, but that, that's the line of the cantilever second floor. But the second floor. And then that's the, our second floor bedroom space. So it's essentially a nine foot by 11 foot room, not, not a, not palatial, but, you know, fine for a kid. So it's roughly twelve by 12 total, but then with the closet approaching, it's inside dimensions nine by 11.
And is this a third bedroom in the house?
That'd be third, yeah.
The house only has two bedrooms now. And how many square feet is the house?
About 2,100.
I guess we can see the elevations. So, yeah, as, as far as the elevations go, we're, we're going to be well below the, the main ridge line with this addition. So from the street view, it won't, you actually won't have any view of it. It's all from the, the back of the, the house. You can see this is the the addition, that's the gable roof, so it's quite a bit under the main ridge. And we're, you know, we're just trying to pick up the same kind of farmhouse details, kind of simple, clean lines on the house.
Do you have anything else?
Oh, no, that's.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Yeah.
Uh, just have the neighbors been contacted?
Yeah, they, they, we, we said they got two letters.
They've all texted me to confirm as well.
I'm sorry.
They all texted me as well. Got your note, got your letter, got.
Okay. Yeah. Any responses, positive or negative?
I, I haven't heard responses.
Yeah, so we're going to check to see if there's anyone else here for against. If anything comes up, then you can come back on. Once everyone's had a chance to present, we're moving to business session and we'll vote. As I said at the beginning, Chad is seated for this, so it'll be the five of us. Five of us voting, you need four votes for the variance. Anyone here for or against? Is there anyone online?
No one's raising their.
Okay. Anyone online want to present anything? Guess, raise your e-hand. Nope. Do you have anything else you'd like to say before we move into business session? When we move into business session, we can only discuss among ourselves what's in the record.
Um, it's, I guess we feel like this is a, it's a, a request that's hopefully in line with, you know, the character of the neighborhood, the, the zoning regulations. We were really just trying to get to a third bedroom and tried to do it in the most kind of inconspicuous and, and ask for the least amount that we felt we could, could get. We really didn't feel like the addition could be made smaller and still function as a bedroom. So. But appreciate your time.
So I'm going to move, move into business session, discuss in a second. I guess I'll start. I had questions about the cantilever at first, if necessary. It sticks past the existing line, but nine by 11. I don't think you're going to hit a room much smaller than that. You know, it'd be like a nine by nine room or something like that. That seems like it's unreasonable to say a third bedroom, and how it has to be nine feet by nine feet. And this, even at, with the cantilever, is significantly less than what the board previously found a hardship for and approved. So, um, maybe my analysis would be different if there wasn't the hardship previously approved. But with, you know, the previous finding of the hardship and this being noticeably less than what was found in 2005 and 2016, most notably the, but eight. Most notably, about eighteen feet from the line, now before it's thirteen feet. Um, this can't be seen from the road, it's not any, it's not like a height difference, it's gonna be obtrusive compared to what's previously approved. Um, that's, that's my thought process, but what else?
I, I concur with the analysis, I find very persuasive looking at the prior variances and the hardship analysis that was done then. And that this is less obtrusive than that, so I agree with your analysis.
This is Carden for the record, um, I, I agree, I think it's a very reasonable request, it's, there's obvious that a lot of care. Was taken into putting together the plan to put forth a very modest request. Um, particularly in light of the fact that prior variances do actually run with the property, I think it's actually. Quite refreshing to see such a modest request. Um, but based on the fact that there are obvious hardships with the property, even doing an independent analysis with the odd shaped lot. The undersized lot with the change in the zoning. Um, and, and placement, you, where I'm not sure where else you could have put this with other conditions that are on the property right now. Um, so that to me, it seems like this is pretty reasonable. Modest even, and that there are definitely hardships associated with it.
Uh, dull here, and I have to say I agree with both, both of you, um, you know, having walked the property. It is challenging, um, the way the house is positioned, the way the house is surrounded by wetlands and rock and. Um, you know, it is a modest ask. Um, so I am in favor of granting the variance.
Yeah, uh, yeah, no questions for me, all seem straightforward and I'm in favor.
Jessica, do you wanna make motion?
Um, sure. Uh, I move that the variance, um, as depicted on the site plan, be, uh, be granted. Based on the hardships that are associated with property, um, including the odd shape of the lot. Um, the change in the zoning, um, to the small, undersized nature of the lot, and then other aspects of the property. Including the nearby wetlands, uh.
I'll second that. We'll start, we'll interview Cynthia.
Dull in favor.
Tashin in favor.
Carden in favor.
Snyder in favor. Luke in favor?
So, grant the variance.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I offered a barbecue last time, and I didn't take, I, I didn't invite anybody, so this time.
Anyone need a break? Or is everyone else up for the next one? See a break? Okay, the next matter, nine ninety-five South Avenue. Zoning variance. Want application of Andrea Gomez, Squire, Hinkley Allen, authorized agent for nine ninety-five South F L C. Owners for a variance of sections three point five point eight point two to allow the reconstruction. Of a single family structure, twenty-two point two feet from the frontal property line. And the reconstruction of a two-family structure, twenty-eight point one feet from the front property line. In the two acres zone at nine ninety-five South Avenue, map thirty, block fifty-two, lot four, thank you. I assume the mailing receipts are all in?
Yes. There we go. Just trying to get the talk all set, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name's Andre Gomes, I'm an attorney at Hinkley Allen. For the record, at twenty Church Street in Hartford, Connecticut. Um, with me tonight is Dan Ricchio, Principal of nine nine five South Avenue LLC. The applicant and owner of the subject property here. Uh, joining us via Zoom is Tori Kelleher, he is the project manager for this, uh, proposal. And then we also should have Justin Girolando, he's our professional engineer, should the board have any questions of the technical nature that. Uh, I cannot answer, so, um, just a little bit of procedural housekeeping before we get into the substance of our variance application. The, um, board, uh, should have before a copy of our PowerPoint, by the way, which I'll be going through with the screen. But the board will recall that there was an initial application filed for this site back in October twenty twenty-four, I believe. And that application, uh, sought two variances in connection with the redevelopment of this property. Uh, there were, um, there are currently two structures with a total of three residential units on the property. The proposal then was to redevelop the site with two structures with a total of three residential units. Uh, but the variances requested at that time were for a variance of the forty-five foot setback requirement. And a variance for the two point five story maximum height in the zoning regulations. The public hearing occurred in November, I was not involved in the application at that time. Um, but, uh, given some of the board's feedback, the application was withdrawn shortly thereafter. Uh, the applicant took that time after the withdrawal to really go back to the drawing board, literally and metaphorically. Um, to consult with staff and to take a closer look at the plans and these zoning regulations to see if anything could be done. Given the board's hesitation with the nature and scope of the variances requested. Um, in the interim, while they were literally at the drawing board, uh, the applicant did request. And receive a certificate of zoning compliance from staff confirming the legally non-conforming nature and use. Of the property, so we have, uh, in the record, a, uh, letter from Ms. Carey. Confirming that the property is a pre-existing legally non-conforming, uh, three-family use. And then also confirming, of course, the legally non-conforming nature of the structures and the bulk standards that come with those structures. Uh, notice was published of that decision in December twenty-six, uh, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, excuse me. Um, and there were, of course, no appeals, and then we submitted this application before the board tonight in February. Uh, just again, a little bit of procedural housekeeping, uh, staff did notify Darien Town staff. As this property, there's a very, very small piece in the southerly tip that's located just over the property line in the town of Darien. Uh, we did complete a mailing and, uh, submitted a proof of, uh, our proof of mailing to staff on April twenty-second. And then, of course, staff, uh, got the notice published twice as required by statute on the twenty-fourth of April and May first. So we should have all our bases covered in terms of public notice. Um, but going one step further than that, since the last application, Mr. Ricchio has literally gone knocking door to door. Uh, in an effort to engage the neighborhood and to discuss with the immediately abutting. And then, of course, further out neighbors regarding the proposed develop redevelopment of the site. Um, a number of new Canaan residents have signed a letter in support. Uh, that we kind of had a stock letter with some signature blocks, a petition, if you will. Um, and Mr. Ricchio was, uh, did have a number of residents in support, we did upload that to the portal, so it is a part of the public hearing record as well. Um, and then I will note, uh, earlier today, I believe it was, we did receive one letter in opposition from the owners at twenty-three Talmage Hill Road. Um, we are, as, as I'm sure the board can tell, more than happy to discuss their thoughts. Uh, regarding things like clearing of vegetation and location of the driveway, among other things. Um, but respectfully, those issues are not within this board's distinction and are not up for discussion tonight. Um, it, it's certainly beyond the board's purview in evaluating, uh, whether a variance has been legally supported. Uh, Mr. Ricchio, I will say, has tried to speak with the authors of these letters, uh, of this letter, uh, the Sandors. And I'm sure he'd be happy to continue discussions, but, um, they were, for whatever reason, uh, not willing to engage in discussions at that time. But we are open for the record and for the board's, uh, information to continue having discussions outside of the scope of the variance hearing, of course. So with that, I'm just gonna go into a little bit of background, trying to see if I can minimize this. Should work. All right. So the property that we, we are discussing here, and again, the board has this in hard copy as well. Um, at nine nine five South Ave, the board can see this little red marker here, thanks to Google. It's about one point one acres and it's located at the corner of Talmage Hill Road. And, uh, South Avenue, uh, it's located in the two acre zone where single-family homes are permitted as of right. And detached ADUs are permitted by special permit, I will say, we erroneously noted in our cover letter. That two-family homes were permitted via special permit, that was a mistake, staff pointed that out, that was not. And it, or it was not intentional, it was just an error on my part, uh, and thanks again to staff for clarifying. There are, uh, residential uses surrounding the site on all sides, uh, we have here just a little aerial, uh, with some, uh, metrics here. For the board to see how close some of those uses are to the property, uh, to our property. And importantly here is the, uh, a big piece of this is the topography of the property. Uh, this has been flipped, but north is at the, uh, left side of the page where my mouth, mouse is. Uh, the property steeps very slope, uh, steeps slope, slo- slopes steeply, good lord, excuse me, from east to west. Dropping about twenty feet in grade to the Stony Brook Water Course that runs, um, uh, north to south. And it essentially bisects the south, the property, uh, parallel to the westerly property line. And, uh, here is another visual photographs that we actually took of the site. Uh, sitting, uh, essentially at the toe of the slope here, and you can see, I believe this is probably from Talmage of you, this. This right here is from Talmage. Uh, and given this topography and the location of the wetlands, the site, as you can see here on this, uh, on this slide. Will require over five hundred feet of new retaining walls for the proposed buildings, the septic, stormwater management areas. And in an effort to protect the wetlands on the westerly portion of the site. The applicant put together this graphic, which I think is quite helpful, or I, I hope is helpful to the board. Um, as it shows that about, and again, north is to the left hand of the, of the screen here. That red hatched area, about forty-seven percent of the buildable area of the property, and I use the word buildable loosely. Is the water course and a twenty-five foot buffer. Which, as I understand, has been what staff has indicated to the applicant should not be touched, um, under any circumstances. Um, and then this green hatched area, which is about thirty-eight percent of the property in addition. Is the area that we are going to need for septic improvements, currently you have a substandard septic on site. Um, and absolutely no stormwater management on site, so in order to bring the site into compliance with the drainage requirements. And in order to, uh, put in a new septic that's compliant with the Public Health Code, uh, the site will require about. You've got, uh, another thirty-eight percent about of the site that, uh, should be reserved for that. So as a result of these unusual conditions, the lot is, uh, substandard, meaning it was, um. It's not desirable in the sense of if you're going to build it and redevelop the property. So it did command, and this was a question, I believe, at the November public hearing, it did command probably a lower price than you would normally see for a property of the size in New Canaan. But the flip side to that is that the, uh, improvement of the property, the redevelopment of the property. In accordance with current standards and re- regulations is prohibitively expensive, so that definitely is something that the, um, board can take into consideration, which I'll come back to. On page seven, the, uh, board can see what, uh, is nine eight five South Avenue. The entire site is currently improved, as I mentioned, with two structures, you have a single-family home that's, that was built in eighteen forty-six. That's on the next slide, which I'll come back to in a moment, and then you have what you see here, which is a two-family home that was built in, uh, nineteen eleven. That's the home that's located on the northerly portion of the site. Uh, both of these structures are deteriorated, neither are.
Excuse me, Luke. Nine eighty-five South Avenue, that's your first page in these slides here?
Correct.
And that has two one-bedroom apartments in it now?
Correct.
And how many square feet is that building?
I'm gonna look to Mr. Ricchio for the.
Like, how big are these apartments in it?
We can, I, I would have to, if, um.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to ask, uh, via Zoom, if Tori or Justin are on with the, uh, approximate square footage of each apartment?
Give me a second.
Just, if you could give me a couple of minutes, I can find it.
Okay, I'd have a similar question for the house, so why don't you keep going while they look.
Yeah, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, Tori, if you could just pull the existing square footage of the home and then the, the two-family.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have the field card here, um. The field card indicates that nine ninety-five has eleven thirty-eight finished area.
How much?
Uh, well, they both say nine nine five, so one of them is eleven thirty-eight and the other is fourteen fifteen. One thousand four hundred and fifteen. Trying to figure, I think the bigger one is the single family and the smaller one is the multifamily.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's correct, and for the record, Mr. Chairman, that's Justin Girolando, our professional engineer.
Thank, thank you, thank you.
Didn't mean to not introduce myself.
No, thanks.
So it's one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight total, so it's about five hundred and fifty square feet per par- per apartment?
Approximately.
Approximately, yeah.
Yes.
It's not one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight times two.
No. No, it's not, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, with, uh, again, this is the, the two-family home, uh, both and the, the board will see photos in just a moment. Both of the structures are unfortunately deteriorated, deteriorating, excuse me, excuse me, and neither are code compliant. Um, the, this structure in particular, and I'll again come back to this, uh, at later in my presentation. But it is currently two, three stories high, where the regulations provide for a maximum of two and a half stories in this zone. So there's an existing height non-conformity on the northerly most structure on the site. And this part, this structure is also less than nineteen feet from the front property line, where the regulations require forty-five feet. So again, we'll come back to all of that.
Five, so everything is three story.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nine eighty-five, yes, the northerly, the northerly most property is, uh, nine eighty-five. Although the entire parcel is technically nine ninety-five South Avenue, but yes.
Yeah, I don't know if this is on. There you go, uh, Mr. Chairman, also, that is something that was not, what we were not aware of dur- at the, at the first hearing. And that was actually discovered by doing an existing grade, sorry, and it, the, an average grade calculation on the existing grades. Of the, of the property.
I, I'll actually come back to that, if I may, um, not to interrupt Dan, but I, I will come, but, because this is a confusing site and there's a lot of moving pieces. So I'm trying to kind of lay, with the bricks for how, no, no, it's okay, how the, um, the height of the existing buildings were determined. Which then determined the existing or the height of the proposed buildings.
Sounds, so the property that's closer to Darien, there's no north on this map, that's.
Nine ninety-five.
Nine eighty-five is the one.
Nine ninety-five is the southerly most property closest to Darien.
Yes.
Nine eighty-five is the two-family property further north on the site. So I'll show you here, Mr. Chairman, Board members, this is nine nine five South Avenue, this is the single, existing single-family structure on the property. It's on the southerly portion of the site, closest to the town of Darien. Um, it was built almost a hundred and eighty years ago, uh, and again, just for the board's information. This is set back about twenty-two feet from the front property line, and you'll see on a plan shortly that it's a bit, um. Angled towards the, uh, towards South Avenue, it's not, uh, parallel to the front property line. And again, it's a deteriorating foundation, uh, here and framing failure. Uh, again, as I mentioned, there's no stormwater on site, there's substandard septic. Which, of course, both of those issues endanger the wetlands at the rear of the site. And, uh, as the board can see here, we have some significant structural issues. And, uh, there was, of course, a question, I believe, at the last public hearing, and if there's not, I'm sure there's gonna be one this evening, which is. Why can't you just renovate what's there? And what the board is seeing here on the screen is a major part of that. Certainly, the buildings themselves are not in great shape, but when you're talking about framing failures and foundation failures, uh, the, uh. It, it becomes a safety issue, not just a cost issue, and the structural stability of these structures is, is very concerning. Um, so the punchline to that is, of course, the only path forward is to demolish these existing non-compliant buildings and redevelop the site. So that brings me to the proposed site plan, and, Mr. Chairman, I heard at the, or the first application that was called in this hearing. You had asked for essentially an overlay of what's proposed with what, uh, what is existing.
That's actually what I'm looking for right here.
Yes, and that, that is that slide, if you look at slide ten, Mr. Chairman, um, that is the, uh, site plan. It's a little bit hard to see, but essentially the darker line, uh, that you'll see are the proposed buildings. And this line right here. You can kind of see the lighter line underneath.
You're setting line with your.
Yeah, so. So if the board can see here, these lighter lines, this one that's kind of angled a bit, that's the existing. So if the board can see here, these lighter lines, this one that's kind of angled a bit, that's the existing structure. So that one is angled a little bit with, I guess, the southerly most, southern is on the right hand of the page, the southerly most portion of the building closest to South Avenue. It's angled a bit. And then here, the board can see the existing two family home. That's underneath. I'm tracing it with my mouse a bit. The darker lines are what is being proposed by the applicant at this.
You trace the existing, and this is extremely hard to follow.
Here, I'm gonna zoom in a bit. So again, I'll, I'll start with the northerly most building, because north is here on the left hand of the page. You can, you have here, this northerly building. And then on this side, the southerly most building, which is the existing single family, it's angled here, Mr. Chairman. You can see here, it's a bit of a rectangle with some cutouts and whatnot, but it's angled towards South Avenue. So what the applicant's proposing at this.
Did everyone, everyone follow that?
Definitely.
She has a full size, might make it easier.
Yeah, maybe if you pass the round.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, would you like, I can certainly come up or I can leave it to the board?
Why don't we just take a moment? We gotta talk to him. Oh. Anyone else?
Where did the day? None down, get a garage here.
Yep. So as the, as the board is looking, again, just for the record, I see Board Member Snyder, you're looking, it's the darker lines are what's proposed. They're, yep, they're new. They are parallel essentially to South Avenue. And then you'll see that the building to the south is angled a bit to South Avenue. That's the existing single family home. And then the existing two family home to the north of the site is uh, essentially a smaller square building that's been built into the grade a bit.
I've kind of got the feel.
Yes.
For the ones to the south and one to the right. I'm still trying to get oriented with what's currently there.
If I, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Um, that's fine.
I'm just gonna. Get out.
Does, do, I just want to make sure that people in the audience, you can see us too. Do you want a full size copy of the plan to look at? We have one here. I don't want you, you to feel like you can't see the screens and everything. Okay.
It's hatched.
Yeah. If you want us to pass the plan back, we can. Just want to make sure everyone can see.
Yeah.
Followed it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Mr. Chairman, is, is the board clear on the existing versus proposed?
I, I believe so.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
And certainly we can come back to this, of course, but I'm happy, happy to come back. So the proposal at this juncture is to demolish the existing buildings for the reasons we discussed and redevelop the site with two new structures. Again, one single family and one two family building. The new single family will actually be relocated to the north of the site. The new two family will be relocated to the south, because again, we're trying to work with the limited area and grade that we have on site. They are generally, uh, and this is probably part of the confusion with trying to figure out what was.
Wait, so you're swapping the location of the two and the one. So where the one will be the two.
Correct.
And where it's, the two will be the one.
Correct. Yes.
You can hear us in the back, okay, right as well? Okay.
I, I can speak up if needed.
Well, you don't get a chance to talk after everyone. I just want to make sure you can hear what's, what's being um, presented up here, because we're kind of talking towards each other. Okay.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna try and zoom out a little bit more so I can go to the next slide in a moment. So the um, they are generally located within the same footprint of the existing structures. But as I mentioned, that southerly building will be aligned so that it's not angled towards South Avenue. And the redevelopment also includes a number of improvements to the site, including a robust stormwater management system, again, far beyond the purview of this board's evaluation. But we did, just for the record, include an excerpt of our drainage report into the record. So the board can see we are making significant stormwater improvements, which is taking up a good portion of the site. We are also uh, making various septic updates in compliance with the public health code, which will, of course, all of this will further protect the sensitive water course to the west of the site. Given the steep topography and the wetlands, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to require about 500 feet of new retaining walls for these buildings, the septic improvements, and then the stormwater improvements as well. At slide 11, the board will see, again, just trying to paint the picture here of what we're doing onsite with the awkward uh, configuration of the property. There is a robust landscaping plan that we included in the board's package with, of course, the goal of beautifying the site, but also enhancing and protecting the wetlands at rear. Hard to see on the slide, but in the plans in your packet, you'll see that that is a wetlands enhancement buffer and mitigation area for planting. Uh, at slide 12, the board will see we're making various um, street view changes and improvements. We are uh, trimming vegetation that's currently impeding sightlines. We are eliminating one of the curb cuts along South Avenue and relocating that to Talmadge Hill Road. Generally, again, beyond the purview of the board, but just for the board's edification, generally the elimination of curb cuts that are too close together is the preference, because you're eliminating those potential driver conflicts. And then of course, I have included for the board's review at slides 13 through 15, you have some architectural depictions of what will be onsite. These are the colored renderings. This is if you were standing on South Avenue, looking at the site head on, uh, or looking to the west rather. North is to your right, south and the town of Darien are to your left. You can see here that you have the single family home, uh, where my mouse is hovering. And then you have the two family home here. And then there's a, a couple of different views here. I believe this top right rendering that the board can see is a view if you were standing on South Avenue and looking kind of south, southwest, if you will, looking towards, towards Talmadge Hill Road. Now getting to, oh, and I will say, we also have elevations here to the extent the board was interested. But getting to the heart of the variance application here, we did provide a zoning table, which I hope will be helpful to the board at slide 16. The zoning table shows in that middle column, the labeled existing, the text in red are the existing nonconformities onsite. As I mentioned, the building to the north, which is currently the two family home, is located 18.8 feet from the front property line. Um, and going, doing a little bit of math here or just recounting, so the board can understand how much we have scaled back this application in comparison to what we proposed in the fall. The original redevelopment plan that this board saw back in October had proposed moving the structure, which will now be the single family home to the north of the site, moving it back to 20.3 feet. So we have an existing 18.8 feet. Our, our November, November plan, I'll call it, brought it back to 20.3. But we've gone and moved it back an additional 1.9 feet from the property line. So we are now going to be 22.2 feet from the front property line for that northerly most building. The original plan that the board saw in November proposed an additional um, hundred and six, hundred and six square feet more coverage within the front setback area. But again, we were able to pull that back and reduce that. So now what the board will see with this new plan before tonight, you are going to have 1,174 square feet of coverage on that northerly building, which again, is a reduction from existing conditions and a further reduction from what the board saw in November.
And under the new proposal, the apartments, how large is each apartment going to be?
Uh, so they're. They're, they're set up also as like townhomes, so you know, side by side. Um, and so they're roughly about 2,400 square feet each.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're actually going to get to square footage in a few slides, but they are 2,452 square feet. Three beds, three and a half baths. So I'm, I'm gonna come back to, just to the zoning table. And certainly, Mr. Chairman, if you have more questions, please um, don't hesitate to interrupt.
That's not just for me. Anyone here?
Yes, of course. Anyone on the board, of course. Um, so going back to the existing conditions, now I'm talking about the building to the south of the site, which is the existing single family on the site. That is currently located 21.7 feet from the front property line. Our November plan proposed moving that back to 22.3 feet. But now the current plan will move that back even further to 28.1 feet. Plus, we are straightening the building. We are aligning it to, so that it doesn't tilt towards South Avenue. The November plan proposed 344 feet more coverage within the front setback area. But given that we've pulled the building back, we've oriented it a bit differently. We've reduced that to uh, less than 1,000 feet. We're at 905 square feet of coverage within the front setback area. Again, significant reductions from existing conditions as well as a reduction from our November plan. So overall, the punchline here is that we've moved both buildings back. We've aligned the southerly most building so that it no longer tilts towards South Avenue. And in exchange, we have a modest increase in um, coverage of 374 feet within the front setback area for the site. So I'm gonna pause there, because that's why I said we had these building blocks. It's a bit of a confusing application, especially when you're talking about the November plan. And I wanted to pause there to see if there were any questions about the front setbacks.
Well, I need those numbers again, but I'm happy with you continuing through your presentation and then returning to them.
Absolutely. I can do that. Certainly. Okay, so I wanted to take just a moment to explain the height of the buildings. As the board will remember, I mentioned at the orig, uh, beginning of my presentation, we originally requested a height variance. The existing two family, and just again, to recap lots of numbers here, makes my, me go cross eyed. The existing two family to the north of the site is currently three stories high. The existing single family to the south of the site is two and a half stories. Regulations provide a two and a half story maximum for the two acre zone. So in our November application or October application that the board heard in November, the application materials listed the heights as 1.75 feet, stories and 1.5 stories for the two family and the single family. After the applicant withdrew its application, it went back and actually looked at the plans, at the elevations. It went back and looked in the regulations and realized that those existing heights were incorrect. Those heights were based on the heights listed on the property card for these buildings. They were not the heights as calculated by the new Canaan zoning regulations. And uh, the applicant, I certainly am not speaking for Ms. Carey, but the applicant consulted with Ms. Carey, I think repeatedly, uh, lucky her, about ensuring that we had the correct heights listed for this existing application. And once we got the definition of height settled, we were able to confirm with the assistance of um, our consultant team that the building, as I noted, to the north is noncompliant at three stories and the building to the south is uh, compliant just at two and a half stories. So we, understanding the existing heights and understanding how height is calculated in New Canaan, the applicant was able to take a, a closer look at the plan and work with the grades onsite and work with the proposed grading to eliminate the height nonconformity and totally eliminate the need for a height variance. So the proposed structures will be two and a half stories in height as calculated in accordance with the new Canaan zoning regulations. Certainly Ms. Carey can, can uh, speak um, to confirm that from staff's point of view. I believe it's outlined in Ms. Carey's staff memo that was submitted. So just wanted to explain that since the board saw we had a height variance, now all of a sudden we don't. It was an error that we caught uh, in essence, to, to our benefit. And then just clarification, working with staff on how to appropriately uh, incorporate that height definition into the current plan.
Counselor, in the square feet for the proposed single family?
Yes.
Is going to be how many?
The square feet of the proposed single family. I can tell you that in just a moment, Mr. Chairman. The single family home will be 4,404 square feet. Okay. So um, in sum, we have a plan that will eliminate an existing height nonconformity and reduce an existing front setback nonconformity. There is a modest increase, as I mentioned, 374 feet of coverage within the front setback area. But again, we're eliminating a nonconformity, significantly reducing another. And the uh, proximity to the front property line is really what's apparent from a passerby along South Avenue. And turning to, as the board can see at slide 17, and I'll detail this in just a second. But we have what we believe is a classic hardship case here. As I mentioned earlier, we cannot renovate the existing buildings. We have structural failures, putting aside code compliance and anything uh, that goes, everything that goes along with that. But we have a property that has a um, unusual shape. It's an unusual size, given the shape, and the topography of the site combined with the wetlands to the west make this particular site very unusual and significantly limit development on the site as a result. So as the board can see, we took that exhibit that we showed at the outset of our presentation. We have the 47% in that red hatched area that we can't really touch due to wetlands, or the water course rather. We have the 38% of the site that we really can't touch because we need it for stormwater um, and public health code compliance for the septic, as well as all other retaining walls due to the grading. And that really leaves this little strip of land to build in if you were to build in conformance with the zoning regulations. So what we've done here, Mr. Chairman, board members, is we've taken the proposed structures, which is what you see outlined here. And if we were to construct within the um, or beyond the setback in accordance with the zoning regulations, we'd have these very awkward, very narrow structures that I believe, and I'll come back to this, Ms. Carey said, would not be habitable. Given the topography and the, the location of the structure. So what we're left.
Rebuild on the same footprint. You're not saying you wouldn't be able to build on the same footprint?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm actually gonna come back to that. There's a reason why we cannot build on the same footprint, and that really comes back to essentially reasonable use of the property and what can actually be done to uh, develop this property without essentially becoming confiscation. Because certainly, there's an interesting bit in uh, variance law, which of course, economic hardship is not a valid basis, as you said at the outset, Mr. Chairman. But courts do look at essentially a confiscation of the property. What is a complete, uh, essentially a taking of the property if you are forced to build in accordance with the zoning regulations? And we're gonna get to that in a bit about what's actually marketable for the site.
Saying that it's confiscatory if it wasn't a variance, because he just bought the property. It has value with the houses on it. It doesn't have zero value.
It, it, we did just buy the property, but again, we can't use the, the structures at this point. There are structural failures.
Build on the same footprint.
But not in a manner that would render the property reasonably used, and that would not be a complete loss to the property owner. You could not sell the, those properties in a, building just solely in the, in the footprint.
What do you base that on?
Yeah, that's, I don't understand that. This house is about the same size as my house and the apartments at, my neighbor has two, an apartment that's 500 square feet. So I mean, those seem like consistent, like I don't, I feel like my house is livable. Maybe I'm wrong. But then I feel like my neighbor's apartment's always for rent and it's like 500 square, I mean, always occupied. It's 500 square feet.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, go to the next couple of slides. We did pull some statistics for the board, so the board could understand the analysis that the applicant has gone through. So the applicant has taken a look at new construction over the last 10 years in the town of New Canaan. And uh, again, just pulled some statistics so the board can see what needs to be built here in order to justify the significant property costs and development costs of this unusual site. So looking at the last decade of new construction, single family homes, out of 511 homes built and sold within the last decade, not a single sale recorded had a home without a garage. So automatically you're increasing the footprint because you need a garage. Out of those same 511 homes, only, there were only three with a one car garage. That was 0.5% of the market. And the majority of those 511 homes have a three car garage. So again, these are all things that an owner takes into consideration when determining what can feasibly be built onsite to be able to ultimately sell it.
These might be what people have built on conforming lots, but we also have, uh, you know, planning and zoning has a plan of conservation development that we did last fall. And like, as a town, we want diversity in housing. We don't want every single house to be the same. We want people to be able to live in our town.
Absolutely.
You know, so some houses are bigger, some houses are smaller, but that diversity is of, of value to our town. So I, I don't know how. Maybe some houses, if they're on four acre lots or 8,000 square feet, I, I don't know like how that's really relevant, but I think we have to look at. Not every house has to be the same. And this diverse in housing stock is something that's a positive factor in the town, that I'm not sure how a. that's a positive factor in the town, that I'm not sure how a variance consistent with what you're proposing here helps further that diversity.
And and Mr. Chairman, I respectfully, I disagree. This is a multifamily property. In and of itself, three residential units on a single property, that is diversity of housing. You have a two-family home and then a single-family home sharing a property.
But it's already a two-family there, though.
I'm sorry?
It's already a two-family and one family.
Correct, that is not livable. So anyone could come in and, as I mentioned, demolish those and try and construct something. But if you're working with the site, if you're working with the site, you cannot do that without approaching within the front setback area, given the topography of the site. Um and then, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully submit that these are modestly sized units. If the if the board, excuse me, not commission, looks at slide nineteen, we again took a look at that last decade worth of new construction staff sales, if you will, in the last ten years, the average single-family home in New Canaan was almost sixty-eight hundred square feet.
But those weren't on multifamily lots, those constructions. Those were on single-family lots. So it's kind of-
Yeah, like these variables seem like like there's too many factors to say like this is, you know, comparable. It's just different properties, different locations, not two on one lot.
Certainly, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but these are all facts that the board can take into consideration in evaluating the hardship here. And what we're saying, Mr. Chairman, you brought up diversity of housing. The house that we're proposing on this site is forty-four hundred square feet. So it is modestly sized compared to the average new construction for sale in the town of New Canaan for the last decade. And if the board looks at slide twenty, you see a uh relatively similar comparison. Again, you have uh proposed townhomes in the town of New Canaan for the last decade have been almost twenty-nine hundred square feet. Ours are coming in at about two thousand four hundred and fifty square feet.
Do you have a slide or anything that shows the existing? It can, I know you have the outline of the current structure that's proposed over, I'm sorry, that's proposed or the current structure. But what about the coverage of the existing structures versus the proposed new coverage? And I know there's not a coverage variance request within this, but it is part of our analysis of looking at how much is going to be shifted into the front setback. Um and I think it it just seems like this is based on a plan, quite a significant increase in the development based on coverage, even in the coverage that's allowed over the lot. And I think that's where maybe some of us are hung up on visually. So having what was pre-existing versus proposed might be helpful for us to understand whether or not there's really that dramatic shift when we're looking at it on a visual plan.
So uh uh I would take a look at slide seventeen. That's that exhibit that has all the colors on it. And the board can see, and I'm gonna try and zoom in here. The board can see that light blue area that my mouse is hovering over, that's the new proposed, the portion of the newly proposed structures within the front setback area. And then underneath that, again, it may be easier to see on the screen since I'm zooming in and it's large. Underneath that, you can see the outline of the existing building. So here you have nine eight five, which is again the existing two-family structure. And then you have here what it'll look like with the newly proposed um uh single-family. And then here, you can see the existing single-family, which is angled towards the street. Let's see if I can move over a bit. There we go.
Oh, okay, wait, okay, now I'm s-
Yes.
This is now, I couldn't see the overlay of the old buildings, but now I now I see it, so that's helpful.
Board member Snyder, if you look at the screen right here, that's probably a pretty good-
Yeah, it's a little darker on the screen.
Yep. Yep. So you can see the outline, the what I'll call the faded lines are the existing structures on site. And then the darker lines are the proposed structures. That light blue is what's within the front setback area. So it's a, I I would submit a negligible difference for the southerlymost building, given that you're tilting, you're now moving the building and taking away that awkward angle. There is an increase um with the northerlymost building, of course. And we we acknowledge there's an increase in coverage, but overall, it's three hundred and seventy-four feet uh of an increase for the entire site. And I can run through those statistics again.
Increase I thought you had on your chart within the setback, but I think Jessica was at-
I was asking about the increase, even though you're not asking for coverage variance. I just wanted to know each structure, what the current coverage is versus what the proposed new coverage is. Um and I know that it's not, it's just like, I don't understand this in the context of how much is now shifted, as you pointed out, the light blue, which was a helpful explanation, so.
Is this the, is that the number where on your chart, where chart where it says max site coverage? Twenty-nine sixty-two?
So the coverage within the setback total?
I'm not saying within the setback, I'm saying the total coverage on the piece of property.
The of each building entirely?
Yeah, if you combine them together, how many, how much is covered right now?
Okay, I I'm going to ask uh if either Justin or Tori can get me, oh, you have it?
Yeah, no, yeah. So so the uh the existing coverage with both buildings right now is two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two square feet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I totally missed that.
Saw that part in the chart. I wanted to know each building separately right now. But, okay, it was just helpful for me to try to process.
It would likely be somewhere around, like, I would assume it's like eleven thirty-eight for one and then-
I know that we can get this.
You must have.
Tori, would you be able to to give us the individual existing coverages?
Yeah, it's on the proposed uh survey. Um dwelling nine eight five is eight hundred and ninety-four square feet. And nine nine five is one thousand seven hundred and fifteen square feet.
What was the second one?
Seventeen.
One thousand seven hundred and fifteen.
Uh and then there's additional coverage via two sheds and a wood deck.
And what's the proposed coverage for nine eighty-five?
Is one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine square feet?
One thousand eight hundred and thirty-six. So nine eighty-five is about doubling coverage, not covered in the setback, but covered in general about doubling. And nine ninety-five is going up a hundred, a little hundred.
So basically, the increase in coverage for the proposed structures is really mostly being put into what will become the new single-family home.
That's right. And so just like a little kind of a tidbit, I guess, we're the roughly, the amount of coverage that we're asking for is roughly the size of a two-car garage. So that's, that's, and that's-
The three hundred and seventy-four feet, right?
Yes, correct. That's roughly about the size of a two-car garage, a little shy of that.
And that's the footprint on the volume.
That's great. That's correct.
Well, garage is about six hundred square feet.
That's what I said, it's a little shy of a of a two-car um garage.
So, Mr. Chairman, board members, if I may, um we actually, of course, we can certainly keep talking about the hardship portion of this, which I I do think that we've satisfied here, given the unusual topography of the site, the need to comply, of course, with the drainage requirements, septic requirements, the wetlands at the rear of the site, which again, we've been told uh not to touch. But we also have an independent basis for approval of a variance here, what what we call the Adelson exception. The um the Adelson versus EBA Fairfield, it's a well-known land use case. And of course, this board probably is familiar with it from nineteen eighty-eight. And there's been a number of cases that have expanded it and narrowed it and expanded it and narrowed it. But essentially, what that court case finds is that the reduction of a non-conforming use to a, what the court used at that time, a quote-unquote less offensive use may be an independent basis for the granting of a variance. And subsequent courts have found that when you're eliminating a nonconformity, when you're reducing a nonconformity, any kind of combination of those are an independent basis for granting a variance beyond hardship.
But that's only in the negative, like if the variance gets challenged. It's not at the point where the town has to grant a variance because it's making it more nonconforming. Those cases are our cases where someone challenged the variance and said, and the defense was was really more conformant.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, but I'm I'm giving the board a a second independent basis upon which it can grant this variance. So certainly, you have uh the hardship requirements, which again, it we'd submit, this is kind of your classic case. You have an unusually shaped and sized parcel with a twenty-foot drop in slope from east to west, a water course running through the property, essentially bisecting it, taking um uh the vast majority of the property here. Again, I keep pointing the board to this exhibit on slide seventeen, which shows just how constrained you are for building here. So um and then, Mr. Chairman, going back to the original discussion, um of course, we're looking at the reasonable use of the site. We wanted to provide some of these statistics to the board, again, not not as a uh apples-to-apples comparison, as you said, Mr. Chairman, but just some information on what we're looking at when we're trying to develop a site that is not a uh complete deprivation of the use, not a complete loss when you're talking about the astronomical development costs of this unusual property. Um and then, of course, I did want to touch on um the, go back to, we jumped around a little bit. Going back to seventeen, if we were again to build anything without a variance, even if you were to build one single long structure, you'd have a pretty awkwardly shaped building. It'd be very long, very narrow, likely uh not code compliant and not habitable. Um and it, the the reality is, it just wouldn't be sellable. You have a least, less desirable property with astronomical development costs. And if you were to build in the existing footprint or without infringing upon the front setback area, then ultimately, it would be, nothing could be done on this property. We we'd be stuck. Um and that's essentially what what variance law looks at. Um with that-
I believe when you say that, the requirement would be to not build at all in the setback area. It just couldn't be more in the setback area than what's currently public. Right? There's, if you were to, if there was a decision to rebuild in the footprint, using the current exception, you can continue to do.
Certainly, we have a pre-existing legally non-conforming use, and the bulk standards come with that. So we could, without coming back to this board, um build within the existing footprint. But again, for this property, what it what it costs today to carry a property and to develop the property, given the topography, the robust stormwater management standards in the town of New Canaan, which I understand were just enhanced, um and the public health code requirements, you you'd you'd be rendering this uh unusable. It would just stay as it is.
I I'm curious just to get a little bit more explanation because the forty-foot span of the thirty-eight percent is quite a bit. Um and I know, at least in my notes, you had mentioned that that's being reserved for septic and some other. But do you have more details about just why that is essentially unusable? Because you do have partial driveway overlying into that space. So what makes it, is it more foundational issues that there's a structural challenge there?
Yep. So I I will actually ask our um engineer, Justin, to weigh in on that, if he may. But in the interim, I'll I'll point the board to slide five, which has some of the photos. Again, that that section that you were talking about is the slope. So you can actually kind of see it here. It'd be very difficult. You'd essentially be building a structure into that slope, um even more so than what we're doing now, and it would be difficult to use. Plus, you you need all of that room, but I'll ask-
But doesn't that happen all the time, like for the walk-in basement? Like my house, you walk in on the first floor, and it's below grade on the back. It's like a forty-five degree slope it's built on. So you're walking at ground level on the first floor. It's a small house. You got the kitchen on the left, the dining room on the right. You go upstairs, and you have a bedroom on the right and a living on the left, and you walk out at ground level in the back. So like, you could build something, like, it's kind of like a walk-in basement, it's not a basement.
But I think I think given this, and I I'm gonna defer to Justin, if I may, Mr. Chairman and and board members. I think, given the topography of the site, you would then need a height variance. If you're really going into that slope, you'd have such a tall building so that you're not just building completely into the slope and having no daylight on the other side of the building, I think. But I'm gonna ask Justin to weigh in. Justin, did you hear the question?
Hi, uh yeah, Justin, Carolina with Force Engineering. Um yeah, we, looking at the site, that thirty-eight percent swath is exactly where the steepest slopes of this property are, which just happened to be right in the middle of the property. Um and, you know, with the requirement of having to put two different septics on this property, one for each building, that was really part of the driving factor of where everything else was placed. Uh you can only put a septic, you know, there's certain setbacks to the septic system that you have to comply with, to the property line, to the foundations of the building, to the the stream, um to any of the stormwater controls. And once you start taking that into account, it really sort of starts to place where your building ends up going. Um so, you know, with this particular site, we looked at the soils a little bit further down the hill, and they they weren't um the best. Coming up on the hill, you had some pretty deep sandy soils, which are good for the septic. Also good for, anything good for septic is good for drainage controls also. Um and then, you know, looking at the front of the house, the septic system would have to be at least twenty-five feet away from the house. And by the time you do that, you'd have to be moving the house uh like thirty feet, because you also have to be about fifteen feet off the front property line with the system. So in order to get that space for a septic system in the front, you'd really be pushing that house all the way back directly on the, in some cases, two to one slope.
But you're saying the the proposed septic is under the green, on the left or the green on the right?
On the left. And then there's a large drainage system underneath the driveway. Um and the reason we were able to do that um was because we were putting in a lot of fill. So we were able to put that septic, the drainage system under the driveway with concrete drainage units underneath. And we actually had a septic system under the driveway in the multifamily, but it was less desirable from the health perspective. So we ended up moving it over to the corner where it is now.
But it's doable under the driveway?
The septic system? You can do a septic system under the driveway, but then there, there's also setback requirements to retaining walls and grade cuts. So it was uh much less desirable to have it behind the multifamily. And then, you know, for the reasons of the setbacks off the property line and from the building itself, for the septic systems, it really rendered the front yard not usable until you started approaching the red zone with the buildings. Which also, as she stated, was about twenty feet below where the the grade is at the top of the hill.
And you couldn't get a combined system permit, you're saying, in state?
Well, uh it's more than a combined system permit because one of these buildings isn't accessory to the other. That'd be a community septic system. And that would just, they have much more stringent requirements as far as like setbacks and testing and things of that nature. Um and I don't know that combining the system would really make any more part of this property any more usable. Um like, the steep slopes itself make it very difficult. And the water course being at the bottom of the hill, of course, makes it very difficult. The narrowness of the area, you have to put these structures in the septic and the drain, the stormwater, and then somehow be able to get the driveway on top of one or the other. And in this case, we decided to work on putting it over the the stormwater systems uh just to really protect those septic systems, as there are limited places where if something failed, you you don't have much room to put it anywhere else. So we wanted to give the septic system the best locations.
And this, and if you look at the this map you have there, on the southerly corner of nine ninety-five, near where it jags out, where where it says setback line, you couldn't put the septic system there?
Uh there is one over there for the multifamily. So that's where we ended up moving it to. And and having the stormwater system under the driveway of the multifamily unit. So where the cursor is and where that says setback line, that's, that is actually where the current septic system is proposed for the multifamily. And we went back out and did further testing just to make sure we can um that it was a a good location for it.
And you're saying, behind nine eighty-five, that entire shaded area is required for the septic system for the single-family?
Right, primarily for the setback requirements. So we did um, we did everything we could to have that system as close to the house as as possible. Um and then, you know, because of the topography and the soils that we found during the soil tests, we really couldn't send that system closer to the river. Uh there's also a retaining wall that had to be placed, which was limited on where that could go because of the the wetlands and the water course that are down there. And it really, we we have the septic system as close to the water course as possible. And through some um wo- uh working of the foundation drains for the home, push that home as far back towards that septic system as possible. working of the foundation drains for the home, push that home as far back towards that septic system as possible. I think there's maybe four or five inches of wiggle room that we've, but that's about it.
Thanks, Justin. For the record, Mr. Chairman, the drainage report, as I mentioned, is in the record that details some of the drainage information. I believe we have information as well on septic.
You're saying the septic plans are in the application?
I don't know if the septic plans are in the application, but we did have, certainly, we have Mr. Giordano's testimony. And then, we have the civil plans at tab three. There might be some information.
I had four, four plans in the civil set. Did you submit all four or just the zoning plan? I didn't double-check them.
Airset.
Right. So, the second set, the second plan in there would be the septic plan. And that's where you'd be able to see, for the multifamily, in that corner, down in the Darien corner, is where you have the two septic tanks and then the leaching row, which is sort of pinned in by the property lines and the roadway in the house and the steep slope. So, the septic system, you have to line it up with the natural contours?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is tab, tab three?
I don't think we have it with the tabs.
I mean, you, it's in the record online.
With tabs?
Yeah.
But it's the last page on section three.
The third to last page.
No, that was drainage plans.
Well, you can see the septic system is what I was, if you look at the drainage details, you can see the septic system. It has a P three over it or a P three next to it, excuse me. You can see the septic tank and then the luch field.
It should be, the second plan would be the septic, the SSDS stands for Subsurface Sewage Disposal System.
I don't have the SSDS in here. I have drainage.
I think you do. That's the last thing.
This is different.
Oh, yes. Mr. Chairman, you were correct. Apologies. It was stuck together. It is the last plan. So, through you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to board member, is it Carden? Am I pronouncing that correctly? So, Board Member Carden, you had asked about building within that green-hatched area. I think if you look at the SSDS plan, it gives a little bit of, no pun intended, color to that question. When you're looking at the septic systems on site, the various retaining walls, that kind of shows you that we're, we really are boxed in, if you will, to the front of the site.
Along with the topography as well?
Yes, absolutely.
You did, I noticed on one of the plans here, you had made mention too, the pre-existing sheds. And obviously, those are coming down the-
Correct.
Do you happen to know the coverage amounts of those two sheds? Because obviously, that brings up existing coverage that you, I didn't even know that was ever counted for their current coverage.
Tori?
It was.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the differentials and the current amounts along with the proposed is, the current amount is inclusive of these two sheds?
Let me just double-check, because the numbers that Tori gave, I don't have, Tori, the numbers that you gave of existing, did they included the deck and the sheds, right?
Correct. That's correct. That all should be on the proposed survey.
Yep.
But you gave us the coverage for the two buildings before. You said- Look for the chart you had.
It looks like roughly maybe about three hundred fifty or so is the shed coverage, the two sheds. Because the two buildings that exist right now, it seems like it's around twenty-six seventy-four, twenty-six seventy-three, maybe?
Yeah. So, actually, Board Member Carden, if you look at the zoning location survey, you can see just under the zoning table, there's existing building coverage. So, it says dwelling number nine eighty-five, eight hundred and ninety-four square feet. Then it says shed one, ninety-two square feet. Shed two, two hundred and fourteen square feet. Wood deck, forty-seven square feet.
That's not correct. The two buildings, he said, building one, seventeen seventy-nine. And building two, he said was eighteen thirty-six, which adds up to thirty-six fifteen.
That's proposed.
Oh, you're asking the existing?
Yes, because Board Member Carden was asking about the shed square footage.
It adds up at twenty-nine hundred or so.
Yes, yep.
Because the numbers weren't quite, so I wanted to confirm that those sheds-
So, it's twenty-six oh nine for the existing buildings?
Without the sheds.
Without the shed and the, yeah, I believe it's two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two square feet with the sheds and the deck. And then, the total proposed is three thousand six hundred and fifteen. So, roughly, don't, never ask me to do math, but roughly, you're looking at, you know, the six hundred and fifty, I'll say, roughly, increase.
Counselor, with respect to your contention on the topography causing the hardship, when I look at Morikova versus Weston, there it says actually that the topography is not a hardship, that a building can be placed there in accordance with errant structures in a different location.
So, if I may, Board Member, that I'm not immediately recalling the facts of that case, but perhaps topography under those facts alone didn't justify a hardship, but it's not just the topography here. You have the shape of the site, the unusual depth of the site, the water course to the rear of the site, combined with the topography and everything that Mr. Girolando just went through, the need for the retaining walls, the two septics. So, you're correct. In certain cases, topography alone may not justify a hardship. But that's why hardships or variance analyses, when you're looking at hardship, looks at the individual property. It has to be characteristics unique to that property, which we really have here.
But you still haven't shown that rebuilding in the footprint could be done in accordance with the topography. You're simply asserting in that case that would not be marketable in New Canaan.
Oh, well, rebuild, understood. I misunderstood your question. Board Member, for the reasons discussed, the astronomical development costs of the site, the market for, and there is case law out there that talks about the market for certain uses. That's in Judge Fuller, now Attorney Miriam's land use treatise, talks about market conditions definitely impacting and playing a role in the board's analysis. The, you know, no one knows the market for this property like the applicant, but the, certainly, the property costs and the astronomical development costs would not support rebuilding in the existing footprint. And I can certainly hand it over to Mr. Ricciardo.
Something to consider is, like, Mr. Chairman was saying, you know, I, you know, somebody lives next to me in a five hundred square foot apartment or an eleven hundred square foot house or whatever. Existing houses that are old certainly can be, if they can be rehabbed or if they've been kept in good condition, those, you know, you can have smaller-sized, you know, homes, apartments, whatever, and that's, and those are, those are saleable, habitable, whatever. When you're talking about new construction and you're talking about the cost of new construction, as you can see by the numbers that we pulled, for example, nobody builds in New Canaan a two thousand square foot house. If, because if they built it, the cost to build would exceed, the cost to build plus the lot would exceed what they could sell it for, because it's just not something that is desirable here. And each market has its own, you know, characteristics. And, you know, that's, that's, I think, what, you know, what we're trying to say. Not to say that existing houses can't be of a different size, but when you're building new and the cost associated with that, there is a certain, you know, framework that you have to, that you have to stay within, or else, you know, your, your costs will, your sale, your cost will exceed your sale price.
No, that's a great explanation. Thank you. It's really helpful. I guess just what, at least I'm thinking about too, is when you put that in the packages, the setbacks and everything that the town decided for the character of the town and the size drives that if you do try to increase these footprints, it changes the character of the town. But that was a very helpful explanation.
So, going back to Virillo, which I feel like is always kind of like the guiding case here. You know, it comes down to the property has an economic value, showing that the property has a peculiar characteristic towards to make compliance with the regulations exceptionally difficult, is not sufficient to justify the granting of a variance. It's clear that the economic value of the property without the variance must be an element for consideration by the ZBAs. In other words, variance should not be granted if the property continues to have economic value in the absence of the variance. So, in a typical case of a property owner with a three-bedroom home who seeks to addition within the setback, because there are wetlands on the opposite side, no variance can be granted since the three-bedroom home still has economic value. So, I'm kind of struggling with how this property has no economic value, because someone bought it and someone could rebuild it where, staying on, without increasing it three hundred and ninety-six square feet. And then, let's assume it has no economic value if you did it on the same spot, which I don't believe is anything establishing. Then the question is, how is this proposal, the smallest increase to give it a reasonable use? It's a very large structure. It was nice in the planner's memo, Ms. Carey, you know, said that this is similar size to Twenty-Two Charter Oak. That's a, it seems like a very big structure. And that's on a pretty decent-sized lot, setback from the road with bushes and plantings and all sorts of things. And still, you look at it, and you're like, wow, that's a, that's a big structure. To say a structure that big is the smallest possible use, it might not be the, it might not be the biggest profit, but to say it deprives someone of any economic value on the property, I'm just, it's hard for me to imagine this property doesn't have economic value. I would think that if this couldn't be built, someone else would be willing to buy it as your client was with the existing buildings on it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just touching base on the economic value piece. Again, I go back to what Mr. Riccio just said to Board Member Snyder. When you're looking at the cost of the property, the development costs and the cost of construction, and I say development costs in terms of site development costs, right? The stormwater, the retaining walls, the septic improvements, and then just the cost of construction, which I can tell you has exponentially grown since we were last here in November, even in these last few months. The cost of construction has become prohibitive. Looking at economic value, you're talking about those costs. And then, the existing buildings cannot be used. There are structural failures there. They are not safe to be used. And then, it really just, you have to justify the cost of developing the property. My client took, I'll call it a leap of faith in the hopes that, given the topography of the site and the wetlands and the unusual conditions, I'm not speaking for you, Dan, but I'm assuming you believe that this was a clear hardship case, if you will. As the board spoke about at the first matter that came before the board this evening, talking, it was not a dissimilar-shaped piece of property, it looked like on a corner, with wetlands, and I believe there was discussions about ledge and the setback at the rear. It's a similar situation here. So, economic value, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I disagree. If someone could build on this property within the existing footprint, certainly, they would do so to avoid the need for requesting a variance. But that's why we're here, because it just does not make sense. And then, talking about the reasonable use of the property, Mr. Chairman, that's why we put these statistics for the board to look at, slides eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Again, it goes back to the market in New Canaan. We looked at a decade of new construction sales. At Board Member, is it Duel? Did I pronounce that? Dul?
Dul.
Dul, excuse me. Dul, I believe you are a broker, correct, to real estate with Berkshire Hathaway? New construction, I certainly, you know more than me, but the statistics that we were able to pull, new construction in the town of New Canaan, it commands a certain price, but the construction costs need to justify that price. And on this site, with these development costs, you cannot justify all of the costs in the existing footprint. It makes no sense. You'd essentially be laying the property, letting the property lay waste, if you will, given the costs here. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's directly what Virillo was trying to distinguish. Just the, we won't make as much money versus we physically cannot build on site is a very different analysis.
For any reasonable use, though. The fact that if you could build two houses on the site, that doesn't matter. If you could build one house on the site, that's still a reasonable use. You have to be denied a reasonable use of the property. It doesn't mean the current use can continue.
But we have a legally protected, non-conforming use.
But you decide, but you probably would still have economic value if you decided to forego that use and build one house.
Then you would, we would be back here anyway. We'd be back here.
So, that would even further, like, deprive the property of value if you, if you reduce the density and reduce the amount of units that were on the site, because you're still dealing with the same substandard lot that has increased, increased cost of construction and decreased sale value. You have, you have both of those things.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but I think we're both all struggling with the fact that, like, for instance, your statistics are interesting, but it doesn't show, it shows the average. It's not showing the range. So, for instance, on my street alone, three of these new townhome structures went up that are all around twenty-two hundred square feet. And they all sold for around one point seven million just last year. How is that depriving you of economic value? That's the point we're looking at right now. You have a very aspirational amount of square footage in this plan right now.
And yes, it's within the coverage, but a lot of this is in the setback coverage space. And it is a substantial increase over what was in that setback before. So, I think that's what I'm at least still struggling with, is that I don't see the economic disadvantage right now when you purchase a property for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Yes, there's construction costs, but there are opportunities to still make a substantial amount of money on this property with slightly less square footage and that setback that's in the front.
So, Board Member, if I may, and I'm going to ask Dan to weigh in here, because you're the one who went back to the drawing board, looked at what we could do on this site to reduce it and still make it a viable use, respectfully, and I don't, I don't know where you live, Board Member. I don't know, again, location, 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 just because it's, I don't know the street. I don't know what level of construction, the design, things like that of those townhomes. Certainly comps matter, but it may, as the chairman said, not be in apples-to-apples comparison. But again, we try to achieve a moderately sized or modest-sized unit for each of these three units that still worked for the site. Overall, we're still pulling, pulling it back. We're lowering the height. We're existing that, we're eliminating that existing nonconformity. We're pulling them back from the front setback area. Yes, there's an increase in coverage, but overall, it's more in line with, we believe, the surrounding uses. I will say, I just want to mention one thing that the chairman mentioned, Mr. Chairman. You talked about Twenty-Two Charter Oak Drive. Keep in mind that I'm looking at the planner's memo. Twenty-Two Charter Oak is actually taller than what we've proposed here. And the entire building is thirty-eight square feet smaller than the combined footprint of our two buildings. So, again, I think it was helpful in order to see kind of height and, if you call it width or span, but that single building is about the same size as both of ours combined. So, I just wanted to make that clear. It was not a, it's smaller than our individual buildings. So, when you're talking about the scale, Mr. Chairman, and you're saying that's a really big building and it's setback, certainly, it's one big building and we're putting three units for around the same size of coverage, which, again, goes back to your discussion about the importance of diversity of housing in the town of New Canaan.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No, I mean, I think just, you know, coming back to what the counselor said about if, you know, would there be less value if this was developed as a single home instead of a multifamily home plus a single home? Value comes down to how much will the property command if the current owner decides to sell it? You could easily have a situation where a single piece, gorgeous- a single piece gorgeous may get more than too mediocre. So that's, you know, something that I think needs to be considered and, you know, kind of once again, I don't know if it's exactly on point. But in Lane versus Stratford, it's at a disappointment by a developer is not a reason for a variance.
Thank you, Board Member. I'll, I'll take a look at that case again. I, I don't think this is a, a matter of disappointment, if you will, but as Mr. Ricchio said, if you had one structure on the site, you're making it even more infeasible. And then we'd be back here anyway because it would inevitably be most likely some type of, given, given we can't go into the site, if you will, we can't go further west.
And so I, I think, I think Chairman, the problem with this site for something like what you're talking about is the, is the lot. Is so you have a, you have a substandard lot. You have wetlands, you have steep slopes. That is just not a desire, you know, a desirable lot to build new construction, you know, on with the, the costs of the same on a, than that we would have on a flat lot. But this is, this is a, you know, this is a sloping lot. So the only thing that changes is the value.
But you made that decision to buy this lot and what you're saying right now is that it really isn't a buildable lot when you looked at it. Or you're saying that now, but you are looking to build on it. So I'm, I'm struggling with what you're saying. I mean, obviously, yes, I am a broker. And, you know, people that I've dealt with, they do their due diligence and really take a look at in new construction, I understand the model that you use, you know, and facing what the challenges are with the lot. I mean, you looked at all of this before you bought it, knowing that you'd have to come obviously to the town for variances or do your, whatever you needed to do to build on it. Correct?
Yeah, that, yes, that's, I mean, that, that's, that's correct. Um, there's a lot of fact finding, but, um, the, uh, when you have a lot like this that ha- that, that has what I would describe as a textbook hardship, the fact that, you know, we do have steep slopes and, and wetlands and the fact that not only that, but we're also decreasing, we're decreasing the, 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 the non-conformity in the setback from the streets. So, you know, we're making, we're improving things. I, you know, it, it, it seemed very feasible, uh, and almost you know, we were kind of, um, very caught off guard that, that, that there, there was a, you know, the board saw it a different way. Um, and so, yes, I saw that, but I, you know, obviously taking into consideration, you know, that there, there was a hardship on this lot to, to be able to then, you know, um, I'm here and, and present something that, you know, uh, I think is, as Andrea said, I think, I think modest considering there's also give backs that were, you know, that were, that were giving, pushing it back farther and bringing it down and, and, you know, in height.
And Board Member Dull, if I, if I may, uh, when I, when Dan called me and we've worked together in the past, when Dan called me, that there was a level of shock at, um, not having received the variance based on, even on the prior plan, um, you know, purchased a, a property, understood it was a pre-existing legal, non-conforming, three-family use with existing structures that were non-compliant that are frankly in terrible condition, both structurally and aesthetically. Um, certainly I'm, I'm sure you've seen the site and there are some photos in the record. Vegetation has not been trimmed. The properties just have not been, uh, kept up with unfortunately and have significant failures given their age. Uh, there was a level of surprise that in reducing this front setback. And now we know totally eliminating the existing non-conformity in addition to everything that we just saw. Again, I'll point the board to the SSDS plan, which kind of puts it in stark reality. You have the topo, the septic, two septic systems, the retaining walls, everything. Um, it, it was, as I thought, um, kind of a textbook hardship, um, hardship situation for justifying a variance on top of what I called the Adelson exception. So there, there was due diligence done, certainly. Um, and I, I want to give Dan credit for that. I think there was just a, a bit of surprise at the level of pushback, given the improvements overall that will be made on this site.
Due diligence done before you bought it or is this after the fact?
No, no, this is due diligence before.
Before, before. I mean, what I'm struggling with is putting in a two-family and a single-family. You know, as you mentioned, I mean, the lot size, the challenges that you have. Um, how large of a lot will the single-family home sit on? What's the acreage that you're looking at? Because I think it's under two acres for the entire piece, correct?
It's one, one point, one point one.
One point one? So, so the two-family home is what, what's going to be the acreage? And then with the single family?
One, it's going to be one lot. We're not subdividing it.
But then how are you selling it? Because you said you, you were talking this whole value and salable and whatever.
No, 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 yeah, yeah. So, um, you would create a condominium, uh, unit ownership and, and then
Oh, for the three, for, so for the single family and for the, and the two-family. So you're creating that as shared land?
Correct. Like, uh, like
So you're not buying, you're buying the structure, you're not buying the land, the person coming in. It's going to be owned by the three families or whatever is going in and buying it. Is that what you're saying?
However, the HOA is ultimately established.
I was going to say, we haven't, you know, determined the exact setup of the HOA. Sometimes you can have exclusive use of certain areas.
Right.
You know, but generally that's the idea.
See, I didn't understand that that, this is becoming a condominium, a little condominium complex. Basically what you're saying, right?
Yeah, y- yes.
Essentially, yes.
Yes. Uh, and I think that, um, probably happens, I think, more, more times than you, than, than you, than you would notice or think anytime you see two structure, you know, one structure being built on one lot being sold separately. That's, that's essentially what's happening.
And I just do feel respectfully the obligation to note that in the common interest ownership, ownership act, ownership versus rental and the mode of ownership can't be regulated by zoning. I just wanted to put that out there. So whether it's rental, ownership condo or anything, none of that can be regulated.
But that, I'm, I'm just, now I, I, it's, I didn't understand it that way.
I understand, I'm just making my record.
So that's where I was, I was looking at and that's why I was asking you. The way you've been speaking about this is the value. So you were speaking about, you know, the salability and I'm thinking of a single-family home and then next to it, a two-family home. That's, that's the way I feel it's been presented. But it's not that.
That's not how we intend to.
So it's not, in fact, a two-family homes, two condominiums together.
Or three in total.
Yeah.
So for zoning purposes, we would consider it a two-family structure and a single-family structure because we don't, you know, differentiate between condos or single ownership. It is a two-family.
In line with the Common Interest Ownership Act.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, I, I think where I'm personally, just my opinion where I'm hung up and I do appreciate that you, you know, the new proposal removes the story height, non-conformity and improves the front yard setbacks, um, so that they're a little bit further back. I'm challenged by the coverage amount and the setback that has increased. That's, that's the one place I'm hung up on and I under- and that is still tied to the variance request. But that is a substantial increase. Um, you know, it is almost, uh, four hundred square feet increase there. So, um, you know, for me, the economic usability of the lot is what I'm challenged by with it connected to the request and that increase because I do have, I've seen recent three-unit structures, grand, you know, my street's different from your street, but it was built just near me and there's others being built on my street, um, that are smaller size, you know, twenty-two hundred square foot townhomes, um, even standalone houses. So I think that's where I'm getting hung up on, um, that, that just seems to be a big increase in the coverage and the setback, which obviously changes the appearance of the lot, um, street side and to your neighbors and impacts them more. Um, and, and also while I think the proposed landscape and will probably do a lot to improve the lot, it will also change sightlines and other things that, um, you know, could be some of it will be better, some of it will be worse. And I've experienced that at the homeowner too. Um, more lights in our bedroom, you know, and other reasons, but it's really that almost four hundred square foot differential of what's in the setback that I'm struggling with personally. But I do, I do want to acknowledge the improvements over the prior plan. As I, I do see that there's been some changes there to try to at least remove some non-conformities, but i- it's and I understand the wetlands. I understand the ge- the geography of the issues, but that's the part I'm still hung up on.
Yeah. And so also, this may help. Just so you know, that twenty-four hundred square feet, that is over four levels. So there's a very small amount of square, uh, livable square footage in the lower level. Then the first floor, the second floor and, 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 you know, the, uh, a half-story above. So I, I can't speak to the, you know, the, um, the, the properties that you were talking about. I don't know what those site conditions were. I don't know, I don't know any of that. Um, but I do know that the, there's a size that, that you need to have for, for a first, basically your, you know, your first floor and second floor space. Now, while we were able to kind of, you know, get some square footage in those areas, you can in essence, if you wanted to just count the first and second floor space, I don't know exactly what that would be, but it would be quite considerably less than that. And, and, and kind of create, ensuring you have enough space for two, you know, two kitchens and the, you know, the, the, the two cars, you know, garage, um, and, and stuff like that. I think that's
You don't want to know then as well that some of the townhomes and the new construction near me have only one car garage. So again, like I, I can't say that everything you've proposed is being in this part of the site then to me is unnecessary use of the land while it's maybe a desirable use of the land. So we do have to look at the hardship tied to what's really necessary use of the land. So I, I'm still, like I said, a little bit hung up on that part of it, just how much still has been increased as coverage in the setback.
Yeah. So also I'll mention, and I want to just make sure I'm speaking correctly. Tori, um, is it true that the, that the, the town, the multifamily building actually is less coverage within the setback now than, than what it is that, than what's there currently?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So, so the, so there, that townhouse style building, which we're, that we're talking about is actually less coverage within the setback now than, than, than what is, uh, what is currently there. The reason why I had mentioned, you know, a single fam- uh, uh, the ask is kind of very similar to a two-car, to a two-car garage. It is really the single-family lot that requires the, the coverage and, and if you look at that, at that space and you try to, um, basically take away that square footage from the first floor and try to fit in a, a, you know, a two-car garage, which is what is, you know, necessary basically for a single-family in New Canaan and then also fit in a kitchen. You're, you're, you're not, you're literally not left with enough space to do that.
I, I mean, I, I don't necessarily agree because there are definitely still existing single-family structures that have one car garage. But, you know, I, and that's, again, my point of necessary use versus, and reasonable use versus what is desirable use. So
And Board Member, w- w- we appreciate certainly your, your insight and we'd love to hear. I think we're hearing some of the board members' thoughts, but we'd love to hear more to the extent the board can, can weigh in if there is agreement on that point. Again, I think we're going over and over the same thing. It's new construction. Not existing, new construction, and you're looking at the specific parcel. So respectfully, the one point seven million dollar ton homes on beautiful flat lots on a well-developed street, I'm presuming, I don't know, um, mi- might be totally different than
You're being kind to my street, to be honest. They are actually probably making it look better, but, but to your point, you gave us a bunch of comparables.
No, no, no.
I, I'm trying to look at, and, and so that's why I'm focusing on what's specific to your proposal right now is the increase of coverage in the setback. And it does appear to be obviously to the new partial, you know, single-family home, um, which is substantial in size, forty-four hundred square feet, I believe you indicated for.
Correct.
So that's quite, quite big, um, you know, even for a starter family home in this neighborhood, maybe it's within what you should call those comparables, but there are plenty of homes that are being sold in the three thousand to thirty-three hundred square foot range that are still desirable in this town. Um, so I don't want to pull up because it is true comparables. I'm just saying for me, I'm struggling with how much is in the setback and it's obviously attached more so to that single-family structure.
Understood.
So Chairman, just one thing I will say is that just if we could make the, the, the distinction between existing and, and, and new, because I'm, I agree with you. I'm sure there's existing houses that are thirty-three hundred or even less than that, but I, I do not believe you're going to find a new, a single-family new construction home that's listed right now that is three thousand square feet. Um, I, I, I
But doesn't mean one sell. Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of families that would move here. We would love to buy that.
But there's, there's no, there's no prep, there's no precedent for that. There's no, there's no comparables for that. We'd be the first one coming in and doing something like that. And as I, as we were mentioning, the increased cost of construction and now you're talking about building something that's, you know, ha- you know, ha- ha- there is no comparable for, and you're going to get a lesser sale price for that, that's where, you know, kind of what we're talking about.
Even on those with the, you know, the market, it could be that with respect to the size, it simply be because the plots of land where those are, they were flat, they were larger, they could conform within the setbacks, why there were larger homes built there. When you have a smaller piece of property, when you're confronted by setbacks, when you're dealing with some type of topography that may or may not be a hardship, you adjust your building plan.
And the larger flatter lot that you can build a larger house on without any variance is going to sell. So they're going to have to build a larger house to justify the bigger cost of the lot. Like if the lot's a perfectly flat two-acre lot, it's going to sell for most to make money off it. You need a bigger house.
So I'll just jump in for a moment for clarity. So between myself and Steven, since twenty-twenty-two, we have signed off on every single new construction. So over the last three years, either myself or Steven has signed off on them. I would say on lots smaller than three acres. So once you get above three acres, every single new construction is maxing out building coverage, every single new construction. So, and I will say, most of the undeveloped lots in New Canaan are your, in the back of the woods, not ideal. You know, most prime land in New Canaan was developed long ago. So I will just say very confidently that unless you're in that four-acre zone, most new construction is, is maxing out coverage. And twenty-two Charter Oak, which I pointed out in my memo, speaks to that. That is a one-acre lot. Brand-new single-family home. I don't even think that was custom-built. I think that was just a spec that a builder purchased and, you know, flipped. Um, that maxed out coverage. So that is very common. The development you were talking about on, on Forest Street, they maxed out the coverage on those two lots as well. So it's just, that is the trend we see. Whether that's reasonable use or not, I'm not getting into that, but it is what we see day to day.
I think you drive around town and you see that. You see no land, you know. Maybe it's about the size of the table that goes around the house. So
But maxing out coverage, when you don't need a variance, the different situation than maxing out coverage or trying to when basically what you're showing us is twenty to twenty-five percent of your lot, including the setback portion is what's usable. So I think that's the issue that we're all trying to remedy.
Understood. And wha- what I'd suggest, I mean, certainly there's public, members of the public here, uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest that we perhaps turn to public comment because I think we're saying the same things on two different sides, uh, over and over again, turn to public comment and then um, I will discuss with Mr. Ricchio as to whether or not we'd suggest a, or request a continuation of the public hearing to provide some additional information that might, might assist the board.
So, um, does anyone on the board have anything else before I ask if there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak? After we hear anyone in the audience who's for or against it, um,
Should we move, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, then we'll, um, let the applicant, we'll let the applicant come back up to discuss to the, to respond to, um, the additional discussions we have. Anyone here for, for the application? No one raised a hand online? Is there anyone here against the application who wants to speak? If you could please come up. The, it was on a lectern or two are folding table. Sarah, I sent you an email. Are you able to?
What time did you send the email?
Um, during our session here, probably seven fifteen. Okay. All right. So, I mean, do you want to read your email into the record or just the evidence? I don't know how else you would otherwise get it into the record if you want to.
Yeah, well, uh, so my name is Tim Dan, um, and my wife and I and our two grown children children live directly across the street from nine, uh, eighty-five South Ave.
On, you live on South Ave?
Yes, at nine eighty-six South Ave.
Is it the house that recently had like an oil leak or something and replanted all those bushes, or is the one to the left?
That, that's my neighbor who's a Darien resident. So I'm the house closer to New Canaan.
Okay.
I'm, I'm right on the border with Darien. Um, and as I mentioned, I sent my comments and some photographic materials to you, but late, so they're available.
Do you have a copy you could circulate here?
Uh, I have a single copy, yep.
Um, probably the best way to get into the record, I think, is why don't you at least present it, and then we'll keep the, keep the copy if that's okay?
Okay, sounds good. Um, anyway, my wife and I have lived here since, at, at nine eighty-five, ninety-six, excuse me, South Avenue since nineteen ninety-three. As I mentioned, our home is directly across the street from nine eighty-five. Um, our house is on two-point-one acres, uh, was built in seventeen ninety, has a separate cottage, um, that when I bought the home was rented, but I no longer rent it. Uh, and has a roughly thirty-by-fifty-foot barn on the property as well that burned down, um, seven or eight years ago. So I've met with Dan, um, he's a fine individual. I've met with him a couple of times. That said, I have some concerns with regard, with regards to his proposal. The existing two buildings on the property have between them a total of four bedrooms and three full bathrooms. Their total footprint is two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet. It does not include um, the outbuildings, um, one of which is roughly ten by ten, um, and you spoke about the other one. Um, so two, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet between the two. Um, nine ninety-five is one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet, and nine eighty-five is six-hundred-and-fifty square feet in terms of the footprint. Um, I've measured it, you can also see that from the field card. Um, and it's included, uh, in what I've said.
Can you repeat that, please?
Um, the nine ninety-five has a footprint of one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet, and nine eighty-five has six-hundred-and-fifty square feet, a total of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet. For the last twenty years, uh, the buildings have been occupied by two single families. Um, both, uh, the females were adult daughters of the former owner who sold the property to nine-nine-five LLC. Um, proposal, proposal before you will have between the two structures a total of eleven bedrooms, eleven full baths, three half baths, and garage parking for six vehicles.
So eleven bedrooms, how many baths?
Eleven bathrooms, eleven full baths, and three half baths between the three residences. Um, and I believe that's an increase of one bedroom and one bath, one full bath since their last proposal before even the fall. Um, the total footprint, uh, will increase by fifty-six percent in the, in this proposal to three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet. Um, one-thousand-nine-hundred, uh, feet for the, as a footprint for the property to the south, closest to Darien, uh, and one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet, um, to the single-family, what's being called a single-family home, to the north. Um, and I would like to point out, we keep referring to the one structure as a two-family home. It hasn't been a two-family home for over twenty years. So does that carry on forever? Perhaps, but just so you know. Um, so three families will own or rent under a condominium structure. All this is on one-point-one-one acres adjacent to Busy State Road, South Ave, Route one-twenty-four, a busy cross-street, Talmadge Hill, and a waterway, Stony Brook. This proposal represents a considerable increase in density, wastewater, water, and traffic on the property. While I understand the nature of a non-conforming properties to be, being grandfathered in, I don't understand why we feel compelled to increase the footprint of the proposed buildings, allowing them to become even more non-conforming than they already are. The applicant would have us believe there is some sort of hardship here, but the hardship is not new. The hardship is, of course, that this is a challenging lot in terms of buildable land due to wetlands and a steep slope. By the applicant's own arithmetic, only fifteen percent of the one-point-one-one acres is buildable. So if you do the math, that equates to seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet of buildable land. And roughly half of that, if you do the math further, it will be the footprint of the total structures. The hardship was just as obvious a hundred or fifty or twenty-five years ago as it was on the day the applicant purchased the lot. Its challenging na- nature was undoubtedly fully reflected in the sale price. It seems clear that the applicant is doing his very best to maximize the return on his investment. This is, of course, to be expected. But I believe that this proposal is inconsistent with the aesthetics of this part of New Canaan, a two-acre zone with single-family owner-occupied homes. Frankly, I think that if his proposal is approved as is, he may struggle to find three buyers at the level of density he has proposed here. I think it could easily be a safer return on his investment if this project were scaled back to two single-family homes of more modest scale. Where else in New Canaan can you spend seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars uh, on a, a lot, upon which you can build two homes? I don't doubt that he will do well. What he's asking from you is basically a grand slam, when a double will score a run. There is a tortured paragraph on page three of the application cover letter that I'd like to draw your attention to. The paragraph is titled "Height." The goal of the paragraph is to make us believe that the existing nine-eighty-five South Avenue is three stories high. Where's the third story? That's two stories of livable space, clearly. That nine ninety-five South Avenue is two and a half stories high, at most two, again. And that the two proposed buildings are somehow smaller at two and a half stories each. Okay, you've seen the renderings from South Ave. That's three livable stories. And there's also living space and bathrooms and bedrooms in the, what I would call a basement. This is completely absurd, that the proposed structure is somehow smaller in height, uh, than the existing structures. And nine eighty-five South Avenue is twenty feet, twenty-three feet from ground to ridge rooftop from its South Avenue front, and nine ninety-five is even smaller.
Moment, we're texting speaking. So if you're looking at the property from South Ave, do you know the existing height you're looking at in that picture you're holding up?
It's twenty-three feet from the ground to the ridge line.
And how high is the new one from the same measurement?
It's just shy of thirty-two feet.
So twenty-three feet to thirty, so you're sa- so your position is this, from South Ave, it's going from twenty-three feet to thirty-two feet. So your view is going to go from a twenty-three-foot-high house, you're saying, to a thirty-two?
Just shy of thirty-two feet. On that structure, the other is just over thirty feet.
Okay.
And that excludes the couple.
And the other structure you're saying is how high from your property now, if I'm looking across South Ave?
From the ground to, to the top of the ridge line is twenty-three feet. Two stories versus what will be-
No, no, I'm saying the other house, the house-
Oh, the other house? I, I don't have the height on that, but it's shorter than twenty-three. I had to estimate nineteen, twenty, something like that.
And how high is that one going to be?
Thirty, just over thirty feet. You know, all from their application.
So each one's going up, you're saying, from where you look at it approximately ten feet?
Uh, from twenty-three to, um, to just under thirty-two, so about nine-
Nine feet?
Yeah. And the other one-
They don't have basements.
Right. Yeah, they, they both have two living, uh, l- l- levels of living space.
See, stories aren't necessarily measured from what you look at, like, is valuable information. Stories are measured based on average ground heights above it, I believe, and adjacent to the road. But, so, so that's, and that's useful information, I guess, to kind of something that, in fact, I was thinking of looking at the renderings, it just looks significantly tall. And I guess that would be the view from your house, you're saying?
Yes, built in seventeen ninety, so I'm not forty-five feet from the road. I'm fur- further back than they are. But, um, you know, that, that bulk that you, you know, the light shining in, will shine into my, my son's bedroom, he still lives at home, and our guest bedroom. It, 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 it will be impactful to us and not positively.
So you're saying that the lights from the house, because isn't the driver behind the house? No, the driver in one of the houses-
The house is directly across-
Yeah.
It'll have a driveway on South Ave.
You're saying that would pull out and go into your lights?
Yeah, the, I mean, that's the building that's going to be directly across. And by the way, the, the renderings we've seen earlier took a lot of artistic license. I mean, they looked to me like they're forty feet setback from the road.
I noticed it as well, but I, I, I'm not, I don't have a great perception on that. So I mean, we kind of go with the plans.
I mean, this, this is standing on my property by my mailbox, looking across the street.
Could you discuss the impact this would have on the surrounding area?
Um, you know, I think, eh, eh, whatever is done there, uh, within reason will be, I should, I can't say that, because it's, you know, having eleven bedrooms implying as many as fourteen people living hard by South Avenue directly across from me is, is not going to be a positive for the value of my property or for my, um, you know, my existence.
So you're saying the light would be a problem for you, the property value, there'd be a diminution, you're saying, having that across the street?
The density.
Um, do you have, as in butter, is this use in harmony with the other houses around you? What they're proposing, is it consistent with, you know?
No, that's-
Your neighbors?
That's my point. Um, you know, three families living on a, a, a small lot, uh, under a condominium structure is something you would see in a dense area. I mean, I'm in a two-acre zone. Um, I could, I could, I would love to subdivide my property into two one-acre lots, making myself instantly more wealthy, and it wouldn't even approach the density of what's being proposed here.
And I mean, they're putting in this, will there be a safety concern with this, or public health concern or anything like that, or this is your property value and making character of the neighborhood that's affected?
So in the earlier submission, I don't have the photographs with me tonight, but last fall, you know, my final comment here was, um, accidents. I mean, this is a very busy area. So what I wrote then, and it didn't include the photographs here, but I had actual photographs of accidents. So there have been at least four serious accidents that my wife and I have witnessed firsthand. We were first on the scene, that running across the street, dialing nine-one-one, um, with people, cars flipped over in some cases. Um, you know, my earlier submission in the fall has two photographs. The most recent one was last October, uh, when we were tending to four people lying in front of nine eighty-five South Avenue. Um, we are not medics.
What, cut, what, like, was the accident someone coming out of Talmadge Hill Road there, or was the accident coming out of this property?
So if you look at the property line, there's a, there's, you know, right in front of nine eighty-five is a left sweep to the curb, to the road. And for whatever reasons, it's happened four times that we've witnessed, people go off the road and hit a tree or a rock that the former owner put specifically, a giant rock in front of his house, to protect the house from being hit, um, by a car.
You're saying the cars come down South Ave and go off the road towards the house?
Exactly. And we, you know, photographs are in my submission.
And that's the house?
Nine eighty-five, the house closest to me came.
So the driveway location or the location of the house that's existing versus proposed, causing that, or, or what?
I, I, I would, yes, I mean, I, I assume people are distracted. They're typically going forty miles an hour at that point, accelerating, uh, southbound. And I have to assume they're distracted, because they literally go off the road.
Also, they're moving a driveway. They're moving a driveway to Talmadge Hill as an entrance.
Exactly, so-
Should we talk at the same time?
So the, but the property where the accidents are, that driveway is not going to be off Talmage Hill. The property you're saying where the accidents are, the driveway is going to be approximately where it is now, I believe.
Exactly. It's not changing. The house is, is being moved slightly further back, so perhaps, you know, that provides some, um, you know, additional margin where the house itself won't be hit, but, um-
Has the house been hit there before?
No, because there are trees. So the most recent one, October first of, of last fall, it, a car careened into a tree, which was about eight feet from the house.
Are the trees and rocks that prevent cars from going to the house, is that staying or going?
I, I have no idea. That's part of the developer's plan. I don't know. I mean, they're re-landscaping, so I would imagine. So the rock will be moved and the trees replaced.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so my neighbors also mentioned the, the two-family structure will have its driveway moved from South Avenue to Talmadge Hill Road, um, which is also an incredibly busy location.
I think I mentioned that in my letter.
Yeah.
I don't know if my letter was read.
It was added to the website.
Should I, I can read my letter or our letter?
You finish, what, your presentation, or do like one at a time?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's basically it. You know, my sense of this is, uh, that the applicant is trying to maximize the return on his investment, and part of his investment is being increased by the actual bulk that he's proposing, right? So he could have a smaller-scale project that would require less of an investment, uh, and, you know, less dealing with water runoff, et cetera, because he's putting in driveways, et cetera, um, and end up, you know, with a very marketable property. Again, he's paid seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and you can, you know, put up two structures there, non-conforming. Um, and as you had mentioned, what things sell for, right, you know? And oh, by the way, I'm sixty-five, and I would love to downsize. So two thousand, twenty-two hundred square feet is right, right in my wheelhouse. So, and I know lots of folks moving from four acres to in-town properties. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you coming. Why don't, so that your, your email and pictures in the record, could you give them to, uh, Mr. Payne and Ms. Carey, so that-
Yes.
We have them in our file?
Since you sent the email before the close of the public hearing, I just was unable to share it on screen.
Uh, you want, whoever wants to speak next, why don't you introduce yourself, and then you give everyone as much time as they need?
Donald and I, um, live at twenty-three Talmadge Hill Road.
Here you are.
I'm Elizabeth.
And what's your last name?
Sandor.
At twenty-three Talmadge Hill?
Right.
And is that the one across the river from them, or is that the one across the street?
Across the river. So our, our, uh, property is about at just beyond the river.
At one point, was there a dam or something across there?
No.
Look at the old stone wall there, and it looks like there must have been a mill or something-
Yes.
Where your property is.
There, there used to be, um, like a sluice, where the water was re- removed and put down the sluice, and then into the regular, into the five-mile river, is that it? Stony Brook River, sorry. Um, but that was many, many generations ago.
Okay.
Um, should I read my letter as well?
I think it's already in the record, so I don't have the same concern about making sure whatever you want to say gets in the record. But we would appreciate you doing your presentation. And we always appreciate people coming, whether they're for or against an application.
Yeah. Okay, um, I'd like to start by, um, um, discussing the two-family home, how, um, it's not a two-family home. Um, I, we never were notified that there was, um, any appeal for that- Um, I, we never were notified that there was, um, any appeal for that. And, um, I don't know if Mr. Dan was notified that there was an appeal for that.
Or analysis.
Or an analysis of that.
How did we determine that it was still in fact a two-family?
Um, because when we looked at the field cards, and I mentioned this in the letter, that, um, the field cards for, um, was changed after two thousand and seven. So two thousand and twelve field card, two thousand and seventeen field card are both single-family home, whereas the ones before that were two-family home. And then just as the newest assessment came out and they were selling their house, it changed again to a two-family home residence. Um, the concern we have is that, um, I mentioned in my notice that my youngest son and their only child, the former owners, um, our, our boys are two weeks apart. So we went to kindergarten together, we went to Saks, high school. And my children, I have four, were in and out of the house. They were in and out of our house. And in those twenty years, there was never another car. There was never another family. So, um, we're interested in the, um, process and the documents that show that there was another family there.
So you're saying for the twenty-year period, there was two cars at the property or one car?
There was, there were just the two cars. There was Mike's and Arlene's, and there were no other cars.
So you're saying the density of the cars is going to be increasing, or at least the number?
I am saying that, but I'm also saying that it was a one-family home. They're saying that this home that is nine ninety-five, nine ninety-five, no, nine, nine eighty-five is a two-family home, and I'm saying it's not.
I, I think unfortunately for us, that's not, I mean, that the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, that's not something, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if we're granting, they're not requesting a variance for the number of like a one family to a two family. They're requesting us allow a change of the footprint expansion within the setback. But I think that's relevant information from the standpoint of determining the character of the neighborhood and the density and the general factors we have to consider. Maybe it legally was, maybe it wasn't. That's not something that's here tonight. So I think your idea that, that, that it, um, has been a lesser use, a less intrusive use, you know, and which is consistent with the neighborhood. And you're saying that the use that would become would no longer be consistent with the neighborhood. It's not consistent.
Right.
The neighborhood was. Well, I'd be interested because I'll, I'll sometimes go up that Townman Hill there and take the right as if you're heading towards Darien. You know, when you, from South Ave, you'd come down and you'd take more than a ninety-degree corner. You know, maybe a hundred and twenty degrees. There's a pretty sharp corner there. And you would then go, and then you'd go downhill pretty sharply towards where the river is. And then your driveway is right after the river.
Correct.
So.
It's difficult to get out of.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to ask. I was going to ask, is your driveway difficult to get out of? Because if your driveway is difficult to get out of, then from a safety standpoint, um, would you think that driver would create a safety issue for people coming around the corner and down the road?
Not only that, but when we had our four children going through school, they changed the bus route because it was so dangerous. They had to change the bus route for pickups because they were worried about my kids getting squished.
You're saying, so where'd your kids get picked up then?
My kids got picked up on our driveway at the end, but they were coming from the, um,
The west?
Yeah, from the Townman Hill Church, from, um, Lapham Road, up the road. And my children had to cross over in order to get on the bus. And they realized that because of that curve you were just speaking of, that comes around and people are trying to get to the trains, there was a danger that my children were going to get hurt. So they changed the bus route. For the whole time that my children went through public schools.
Also missing on that is that right across our driveway is another driveway from the Darien residences. And there's multiple houses on that. Can you say your name, please? Don Sander. Don Sander. Don Sander, okay. So there are multiple houses on that road that serves that driveway that's right across from ours. So there's traffic coming from them. There's our, us coming out of our driveway. There's people whipping around that. But if you're coming out opposite your driveway, the sightline's significantly better coming up Townman Hill or coming down from South Ave, it's really your side of the road that the sightline is.
Is very.
Very limited on.
We cannot see anything coming from South Ave.
But the thing is that there's going to be an increase in traffic. I see four, four garages on the picture. Um, that's a lot of cars coming in and out, adding to the traffic. That's going to be coming out of the Darien side and out of our driveway as well. And the sightline is, it is very short. It's going to be a lot shorter proposed driveway for this new construction. As opposed to it's where it is right now, at least it have a straight line of sight of South Avenue, a bend. It's not a ninety-degree turn on South Avenue. At least you can see traffic coming when you're pulling out of the driveway. Um, with the proposed driveway, you, you barely have a chance to see someone pulling around that corner fast to get to the train. Unless someone's coming around the corner and they don't see someone pulling out of that driver by the river, you're saying?
Right.
Add to that, I mean, while we're on the topic of the garages in the back of the house, um, I don't want to jump ahead if you're still.
No, keep going. We're, I think we're all listening.
Okay.
Our lack of comments doesn't mean lack of paying attention.
Okay. Looking at the back of the house, that rear of the house faces our house directly. It's up the hill. And where those proposed garages are and its outside lights, I think we alluded to that in our, our letter. It's going to be shining directly into our living room, directly into our master bedroom. So where there's no traffic today, they're putting in a driveway and four garages, four two-car garages, I think. So that's two, four, six, eight potential cars coming in and out. The noise coming from that, the, the lights that are required to light up the driveway, I'm sure there's coverage of that.
And the rear entrance to the home.
To the house, plus the driveway lights and the noise. Um, it's going to be increased significantly fa- facing our master bedroom and our living room.
Um.
So you're saying that this has an adverse impact on the surrounding area substantially? But the house there right now is not the nicest house. I mean, in some ways, getting rid of that house.
Oh, I, I agree.
We, we are not against new homes. We are absolutely not.
It's just that they're adding a driveway with all those garages right at the back of the house where there's none. If they took the existing house and just kept the existing driveway, built a new house, it looks nice. That would be great. But they're adding something. They're adding a whole driveway back there that wasn't there before.
And the sound, they, they're taking the trees out. The sound reverberation is much greater because there's no shelter for us. It's no trees, no, much less trees and bushes because there's now driveway, a cannon that the sound is bouncing off of.
Looking at four levels of living space versus two now.
Right.
Right. That's what we'll be facing. It looks like a condominium complex, and it is.
Right. Right now, we have, we see two, two floors at seven eighty-five.
None.
Seven.
Oh.
No, seven eighty-five. Um, and there's some light there, but there's no living space in the basement. So there's no, there's no light there. There were just the two floors of some light, but it was covered by bushes and trees and, and what have you.
So is this development consistent with the neighborhood? Or you're saying the four heights is inconsistent?
Not at all. There are no other multifamily homes. There are no other dense building complexes in our area.
And you think that would adversely affect your property?
The value of our home, absolutely.
And there'd be other quality of life type factors, you're saying, like the lights into your living room, things like that?
The livability.
Yes, the livability.
Absolutely.
What about the safety of you coming out of your driveway when they're coming out of their driveway? Is that an issue or not really? Because the view is okay? Oh, that would be an issue because we're, right now, we have to worry about trying to pull out without getting hit, somebody who comes along that driveway. Now you're going to have somebody else who's pulling out at the same time as us. Even when across the street from Darien driveway, someone is pulling out and you're there, it, it can be difficult. Yeah. So you're essentially saying, if you're both looking to the left, they would pull out at the same time you would pull out because you both think it's clear and the two cars would then compass each other, collide with one another? Right. Or they may be wanting, right? You might be wanting to the left. Yeah, I don't know how you'd see the directional from your parallel point across the river. You have that.
Right.
I guess streams would be higher if you were concurrently leaving, I guess.
Well, there's a, there's a little wall too, that little stone wall.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of, across the river. Yeah.
Yeah.
That stone wall's kind of the guardrail there though, for the river. Like you need that stone wall. Like it's not a guardrail where the river.
No, there is not.
It's a stone wall.
And it's been hit. Um, and it's actually falling down. Um, but that's another issue for another. Um, but as we were talking about, um, concerns and property values, um, um, I didn't notice until last night that, um, there was a, um,
A submission.
A submission.
Of affidavits from people in the Canaan regarding support, I guess, of this project?
Right.
I don't know if it's a petition for support.
Right. I think I have it here.
Most of the signatures on there are not from the neighborhood.
Right here.
From across the town, Greenlee those. And we've looked up some of the people that are actually.
Yeah, all of, all of his people who are, um, suggesting that they, um, would
Support.
Support this actually don't live anywhere near us. And so when I got.
Can we go back to that list? Could you pull it up? Doesn't seem related. It's a total of eight people. They're not even in our neighborhood. Wait, I, I just want to, I just, I just would like to see this list before we move on.
Focus it on the website?
I know, that's why I was wondering if we could have it on the screen.
Do we, do we want a way to pull it up so the applicant can address it directly?
I'd like to hear what they say about these people before. I mean, we asked the applicant the same questions.
I have it here if you'd like to see it.
We have to pull it up on the screen so those on Zoom can also see it.
Yeah, I saw that online. So we have gone at thirteen eighty-one Smith Ridge. And at one twenty-three old studio. Work at eighty-two Sunrise. I'm not sure where that is, but that's not in a butter?
No.
Sunrise is near Marshall Ridge.
Oh, three thirty-eight Main Street, one sixty-five River Street. We want to land down there.
Bring water is, it's up on the west side, bring water.
Greenlee's Way over past at the.
It's all poisonous.
Yeah.
None of these are within two miles of the.
Yeah.
Oh, and then Deep Valley's way on the.
Let me just, can you go back up to the water? So none of these people are butters that would be required to get noticed?
Correct.
Um, so.
I, I don't want to make another comment on this letter, but I think none of them are butters who would get noticed. They're not in the neighborhood.
Correct. I mean, that's why I think address, having the applicant address why this was submitted is more helpful than asking the neighbors about it.
So, um, I, uh, we noticed it last night and I, I dismissed all of my children. I work at South School. I dismissed my, my kids. I came home and I thought, I, I could do a petition myself. So I went around, I stopped at, um, several houses and anybody who was home and every person who was home that I was able to talk to, signed my.
Wait, are those people a butter? Or are these people like all over town?
These are butter.
Right, next.
This, this is.
And you emailed that to Sarah or this is something new you had?
I just, I just did it like, I walked in the rain from neighbor to neighbor.
Petition against.
So. And I, I just finished it.
Isn't that something? Can you submit the paper copy? Can we read that? I haven't read that. I don't think anyone has voted right there. We have a copy.
I made a copy. Um, so the, this is, um, Townman Hill and South Avenue. They're all, and I didn't, I couldn't get to all the houses. I, I did it, as I said, after school today in the rain. Um, most people weren't home. The ones that I did get were, uh, very anxious to, um, hear more about the, uh, project.
The cartridges at Two-Due Lane would sign that in a second.
So sixteen.
I didn't have, yeah, I didn't have the chance to do.
So where's sixteen Townman Hill vis a vis your?
Across from us.
That's a good one. It's right there where the driver comes from. Nine seventeen South Avenue?
That is just up the road. It's the first house off of the, uh, Parkway. It's a little house.
Yellow house on the west side of.
Yeah.
Two Townman Hill, which one's?
Right across the street.
That, okay. Six Townman Hill?
Right across the street.
Forty Townman Hill?
Also across the street. Several of them gave me their phone numbers so that I could talk to them after this is over. So. Um, were there any points that I didn't bring up that you wanted to bring up?
No, I think most of them were probably even brought up, right? I think that was it, which is the critical.
Is there something that you thought of that I missed?
Yeah.
Um, mine kind of comes from the heart since I, you know, lived here. My husband and I met at high school. This is our town. Uh, he was born here. All sixty years here in the Canaan. So, um, this means a lot to us and it's impacting our lives in a negative way and our investment in the negative.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that, you know, this, this proposal, it looks nothing like anything anywhere near us, right? Two acre zone, single family owner occupied. There's nothing like this, you know, that's outside of the downtown part of New Canaan proper. So Dan's a good guy. Like I said, he's going to do well. We don't, I, I just don't understand why we need to say yes to this, which is inconsistent with the neighborhood. When he could do a scaled back project, um, that will be very profitable. He paid seven hundred fifty grand for the lot. And he's going to have two structures on it to sell. So, you know, I wish him well and he will do well. But what he's proposed to you is to just shoot for the moon and maximize.
So, Tim, you weren't on that list, were you? Circulated the signature list?
I, I, as I said, I didn't get the.
No, I don't need to finish now. I'm just trying to place these in my mind. It seems like every single.
There's another person who was supposed to be here tonight and she didn't know she had a meeting in the city today. But if I had known that she had this emergency meeting in the city, I would have had her sign it. Um, there are several people who, as I've mentioned, would sign it, but I didn't have a chance to get to them. I didn't think of it until, um, I saw his petition last night.
Yeah, I, I would add that, you know, my, the budding property to me who's actually in Darien at Two-Due Lane, um, it's an older couple and they live in Florida most of the year. They're returned this, uh, later this week for their seasonal residency here in Darien, right on the border. When I first alerted him to this. When I first alerted him to this, because he never got the certified letter originally from last fall, because he wasn't home to receive. Uh, he was in Florida. When I alerted him to what was going on, he literally, he's very wealthy, he offered me twenty-five, his first twenty-five thousand dollars to hire a lawyer. Okay, so I'd know if, if he could be here, he would be here and he would certainly sign that petition. As he's opposed.
Um, if it would help, I'd be happy to go out and continue to um canvas the neighborhood. And um add on to the signatures, I know several um who are interested in signing and I did not get to them.
Ms. Carey, we can hold this meeting open, we don't have, when, when do we have to close it back?
You can continue it to the June meeting. But I'm, the applicant would have to consent to that.
Well, I think we appreciate the information you brought to us. Um, it's important for people to participate. And we encourage it, we know this is your second time coming, we know, I remember last time you were upset because. Um, we didn't, we didn't end up hearing, you're already in the hallway. But um. Again, everyone's input, whether it's for or against, just different viewpoints. Um, diversity of thought, diversity of, you know, experience, it's always helpful for us to help to understand the neighborhood and the positions. Um. Does anyone else on this board have any questions of? Of the, the neighbors before we give the applicant a chance? To respond.
Under, no, no question, it's been helpful context, I guess, and just, this is morbid curiosity maybe, Sarah, I don't know if you can answer, but. With the point of view of somebody who's on the other side of Talmadge Hill, who's a Darien resident matter or not, since they're not a.
I mean, uh.
So um town residency does not impact on or the other um legally. You have to send notice to everyone within a hundred feet, so those.
No matter which town.
Correct, so the um residents on Dulane that um I think are in Florida, I spoke to them, I think in like November or December when they eventually got their notice. They still, it, they didn't get the notice because they were in Florida, but they did eventually get the notice and that was a requirement, um but.
Okay.
Outside of that.
Thanks.
Till we go back to the applicant?
Yes, no one else has any comments?
No comments.
Oh, I just had a question, I don't know who to ask, but um who would I talk to about um? The abandonment of the um.
You would have to hire a lawyer, we can't tell you like who's a good one or a bad one. I mean, there's a lot of good ones around, they're frequently come before this board, you could just look to see who.
What state it was.
I'm happy to, you can reach out to me separate of this, I'm gonna, I can explain to you what went on.
I, I just, I have no idea, obviously, we were stuck in the hallway last time, we had no idea. Who it happened, yeah, at that point, right?
No.
Yeah, nothing had happened then.
As the applicant had explained previously, in between the two applications, they reached out to me to issue a certificate of zoning compliance, which is something that we do for any property in New Canaan. Um, if you provide the information, and so I issued a letter on the status of, based on the information provided to me of what. Was considered a grandfathered in use on the property and I can explain that to you outside of this.
If you want legal advice, so I think, you know, it's your decision, but.
Okay, that's.
You may wanna have, there's very limited, there's limited appeal periods to appeal things. So again, if you wanted to appeal something, you would wanna talk to your own lawyer to get your own advice on, on what, what your rights are and so on and so forth, we. We're not in a position, I feel like, where we could give you legal advice, Sarah, every, is great. Um, she'll help everyone to the extent you can, but if you feel like you need advice. You know, that's, that's your right and that's what you should.
Okay, thank you.
You should look into, so what does the appeal um limit time of your time?
So, uh, I'll, I can explain that to you outside of this, yeah, I could.
Yeah, and, and again, that's something that you have, I, I don't know if you'd wanna do a process, is what I'm saying, you of course have the right to do it. But it's, it's like building a house, it's like anything else, do you wanna do it? Do you wanna change your brake pads on your car and hope that they work? I don't know.
Yeah, just send me an email and we can set up a time and I'm happy to chat with you about all the, all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
An extra chair. Okay, proceed, Mr. Chairman?
May.
Okay, for the record again, Andre Gomes, counsel for the applicant, um I think at this point, the applicant, uh, we had discussed it and we are going to ask that the commission continue the public hearing to the June meeting. We do believe we have a little bit of additional digging to do, perhaps some additional information to provide the board. Um, however, I would like to just point out a couple of things in response to the comments received from the neighbors. Um, again, I know Ms. Carey will be speaking with the applicant, or excuse me, the neighbors specifically about this, but I did want to just reiterate for the board that we did. Go through the appropriate certificate of zoning compliance process, there is no notice required by statute or the regulations with that process. And then we published no- notice in the newspaper, um I think it was December sixteenth, so. Again, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, they should consult their own counsel, I'm not providing them their own legal advice, but. It is our opinion that the statutory appeal period has come and gone without challenge and there was no additional notice required by the applicant on that. Um, there was a number, uh, there were a number of comments presented regarding the height of the building and there were photos shown, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman. Height for purposes of the zoning regulations is calculated in accordance with the definition of the height, certainly if. The board does not believe our calculation of existing and proposed, I defer to staff. But it is clear per New Canaan Zone zoning regulations that the existing northerly structure, the existing two-family is currently non-compliant at three stories. The existing single-family structure to the south is compliant at two and a half stories. We are proposing buildings that, again, per New Canaan Zone regulations are zoning compliant at two and a half stories. Um, there was some discussion regarding, uh, there was a lot of discussion regarding density, this is an increase in density. And certainly there is an increase in the number of bedrooms, we, I mean, that's obvious from the plans, we're not disputing that, but this is an existing three-family use. We are proposing a three-family use, and with all due respect, I think it's disingenuous to say that there's gonna be. I thi- I think I heard something about fourteen people in these three units. Um, again, the single-family home will be five bedrooms, the two-family, or the um, the two-family homes, each townhouse will be three bedrooms. You're, you're really looking at a family and I believe that's the market you're kind of marketing for, is a family with children. Um, and uh I, I think it's disingenuous to say that there's going to be fourteen people and potentially all these numbers of cars coming and going.
You're saying each two-family has three bedrooms and the single-family has five?
Correct.
For the total of eleven, okay.
Correct, yes, so, but again, when we're talking about density, you're thinking of the number, generally, you're not thinking about the children. That are there, you're talking about the number of cars coming and going, existing three-family use to a proposed three-family use, I just. I know the board knows this, but I just wanted to reiterate that point. A lot of discussion about traffic, uh, again, with all due respect, I'm not a traffic engineer, but as far as I'm aware, neither are the neighbors who, who spoke. Uh, in opposition to the application, we certainly appreciate their commentary, but again, a lot of the traffic concerns we heard about are existing conditions. Which, if we impact at all, it would be a de minimis impact, again, existing three-family to a proposed three-family, so those are existing conditions. I'll also point out to the commissioner, to the board, I keep saying commission, if the board looks at the site layout plan in the um, in the zoning site plan. In the package, you will see that there is a significant tree clear or vegetative clearing on that corner of South Ave and Talmadge Hill Road. For the express purpose of improving existing conditions here to provide the DOT required sightlines. Because this is, I believe, a state road, so we had to meet those state guidelines for um, for sight distances and we're providing that in accordance with DOT standards, so I wanted.
You're saying the sightlines coming out onto Talmadge Road, that intersection are consistent with DOT standards?
Correct.
And you.
As proposed, not.
You have an engineer who, I guess, measured that or certified as to that?
Absolutely, these are on the, on the stamped plans, we have Justin on the Zoom if he needs to weigh in, but the board can see that we have, I think it says. Uh, hatched area to remain clear for sightline safety purposes, no obstruction taller than one foot in height shall be installed, et cetera, et cetera, to be approved by engineer of record.
Sightline though, like how many feet is it?
I think it was a hundred and sixty-five, uh, no, excuse me, hundred and sixty-five uh looking to the east. If you're coming out of the driveway, the proposed driveway in Talmadge Hill Road and you're going east or taking a left, the minimum sightline there is a hundred and sixty-five, that's minimum. And if you're ta- going right out of the Talmadge Hill site driveway or going west, the minimum is two hundred and seventy-six feet and I believe we meet both in each direction.
So what's the standard that the DOT has for the road sightlines?
Well, I, I believe those are the minimums, that it's generally based, again, I'll defer to Justin to explain it, it's generally debased, based on the. Orientation of the road and prevailing speeds and things like that, but that is the minimum, Justin can weigh in if he can, if he's still on, there he is, on sightlines.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's based on the grades and the, the travel speed on the roadway mostly. Um, coming around the corner, there's no through movement through that intersection, so everybody's coming around a corner, so it's minimum speeds expected. Which is why the sightline is different in each direction.
So what's the, the required sightline, what's the required sightline if you're coming out of the driveway looking towards South Ave?
It's the distances listed on the plan, I believe, that's what.
That's the one sixty-five.
Minimum, and then that's what determined the area that had to remain clear around the corner. And also why that corner, we were actually, there's a retaining wall along the road there existing. And that retaining wall is being removed and the grade is being lowered all through there. Um, which you can see on.
So you're saying this driveway is gonna have more than a hundred and sixty-five feet of sightline towards South.
Yeah, we have at least that, yep.
Correct.
And you're a professional engineer?
I am, licensed in Connecticut.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Justin. So again, uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, that was just the point, there's a lot of concerns about traffic, all of these concerns are existing conditions, we're actually improving them. Um, over existing conditions as, as stated. Um, some discussion about the concern with lighting, particularly to the property along Talmadge Hill Road to the west that the neighbors just spoke about. Um, again, we, we are proposing a fairly substantial landscaping plan that will provide additional trees that will certainly. Uh, lessen any lighting, however minimal, that will be coming from cars going in and out of the garage. Uh, but certainly if this is something, I believe we have to ensure that there's no trespass beyond the property line anyway in accordance with the zoning regulations, so. In order to move forward with it anyway, we're gonna have to propose no trespass beyond the property line, I don't believe that includes vehicles going in and out, because obviously that's not a stagnant condition. But we are proposing a very substantial landscape buffer, essentially along the easterly border of that brook. To ensure, again, beautifying the site, protecting and improving the existing wetland area, minimizing impacts to neighbors and so on. So I, I do wanna make that clear, because it sounded like there was going to be a lot of tree clearing and no replacement, that's certainly not the case here and that's shown on the landscape plan. Uh, there was a, a number, there were a number of comments about property values, again, certainly, um, I, I am not an appraiser, but. With all due respect, I don't believe that the neighbors were either, and as you pointed, are either, and as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the existing property, it, it's, it's not, um. It's certainly not going towards its highest and best use, it's not attractive, it's not well-maintained, it's deteriorating, it's not usable. So I believe that's saying that the proposed plan will negatively increase all of the property values in the area, with all due respect, I think that's speculation. Um, and we will definitely be looking into that as well. And then finally, the last comment I wanted to make, and of course, if the board has any other questions or anything else that we can answer. Uh, before continuing the public hearing was the notice. We did send out the required notice under the zoning regulations, so the, I believe it's a hundred foot of butters, received notification of the public hearing. I know Dan himself has made specific calls, texts, outreach to the neighbors, the direct abutters right in the area.
Yeah.
You can speak to that.
Yeah, and so there was also a comment made about that, that, you know, list that I had submitted, um, I did personally go to every single one of the butters' houses. I was able to, you know, meet with Tim, who, uh, obviously we have a differing opinion, but he's a great guy. Um, I was also able to speak with um, one of the other neighbors to, I'm sorry, to the right of the property. Um, I wasn't able to get, you know, actually uh, sit down with her, um, the only neighbor unfortunately I couldn't speak with was Mrs. Sandor. Uh, I, I, I did try and I would like to still have some sort of open communication, uh, I, I'm not somebody who's not trying to work with everybody here. Um, but if I can't speak with them, obviously, I, I, I can't, there's, you know, I, there, there's nothing I can do to try to work through concerns. Um, but so the list that I provided was just community members in general. Um, it was anyone that was part of the New Canaan community, everybody was a resident here and that's, um, you know, who was provided on that list.
So I just wanna be clear, we did not submit that as proof that we had received signatures from the abutters, because obviously the addresses are on that list and. We can't make up addresses, so it was just proof of the applicant's willingness and commitment to try and engage in community outreach, which you don't always see from a lot of applicants. Um, literally knocking on doors and uh getting feedback from direct abutters and then just greater New Canaan residents. Uh, so again, to be clear, that was not.
How was the person on South Ave, like the person on?
Sunrise.
Sunrise determined?
How, how did you?
Like this person on Sunrise, how do you, how do you find this person on Sunrise who had an interest in this project?
Uh, I, I, I mean, I talked, I had some, I had some friends in the area, um, I had, you know, there's some people that I, that I knew and uh. And also some other contacts that I shared, uh, you know, the, these plans with and I said, hey, this is what, you know, we're looking to do uh on this site. I would, I showed them what was there, I showed them what we were proposing to do and uh, you know, the people that, you know. Liked it, you know, liked the proposal, uh, signed the petition, and like I said, I, I definitely. Put an emphasis on the, the people that were directly surrounding this property, but I. Uh, Mrs. Sandor, uh frankly, had a lot better luck than me, um, I did go to all of the butters and I knocked on their door and I, I couldn't get in touch with them. Uh, but the only, I, I was able to just get in touch with, um, you know, Tim and then the neighbor to the right.
So when did this episode happen where you couldn't get in touch with them, every once you had to get ahold of your friend across town?
Um, I don't, I don't recall the date, I was in the last maybe, you know, month to two months.
But so you went around to all the neighbors though? Locked up, you, 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 I guess, reached out to them somehow.
I, I went to their house and knocked on their door, uh, because I don't have their, you know, their phone numbers, so that was the only way that I could, you know, um.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, we weren't trying to misrepresent that these are our butters, it was just showing that we've made an effort to engage. Neighbors, walking door to door, knocking on doors and just greater New Canaan residents, um, that, that's really what it comes down to.
Yes, we appreciate the different information.
The only other thing that I wanted to mention as well is just their, you know. Respectfully, there was some misinformation that was said there, I think, um, you know, Mr. Sandor mentioned that there's. Those, th- those are four two-car garages for a total of eight cars, that, that's, that's not the case, just so, you know, you know that, those are single-car garages, every garage there is a single-car garage.
So there's six garage bases.
There's six garages total, not eight.
I don't remember that content, question, I guess it's helpful, so it's two garages per unit you're saying.
Correct, that's exactly right, um, and then I know that, um, you know, Tim mentioned some coverage amounts. I had a professional surveyor do all the coverage amounts on this, so I, I respectfully, I, I don't know where he got those numbers, but I mean, we, we had a licensed surveyor that.
They're, they're generally close, so he probably scaled them with a ruler, I mean, I noticed they're marginally off, but for someone doing it on their own, they weren't. You, you know, they weren't that off, I mean, the significance of your numbers versus his numbers, they're pretty generally close. I mean, I, they didn't, didn't seem. Perfect, you know, and of course, if you have a stamped plan that says this is a square feet, that's what we're gonna use, because the surveyor stamped it. But um, I, I don't feel like it was anything.
No, I just wanted to clear, yeah.
Ill-advised.
No, no, and, and Mr. Chairman, that's not what we're saying, it's just, there's a lot of numbers flying around tonight, everyone's eyes are going cross, at least my eyes have gone cross-eyed with all of the. Original plan, proposed plan, the existing conditions, how we can change it, the north building, the south building, we're just trying to clarify the addition. the additional numbers that were brought out by, um, the neighbor whose last name, I, I know, Paul, Dan.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the neighbor about the coverage. They don't match what we have on the plans. And I would just respectfully suggest that the board look at the plans that were done by an actual surveyor. Um, and again, part of the reason we're confused about the height, or we were confused about the height, is because the assessor's card was not accurate. So I would also be wary about the assessor's card on things like height and whatnot. Okay, Mr. Chairman, that, that's, that's it for us. If the board has any other questions, we have some additional information to get the board and then we just um, ask for, that the board continue the meeting to its next regular meeting.
Is everyone in favor of continuing this?
Yes.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay, um, should we vote on that?
No, no.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd ask is if the board has any other questions, suggestions, stats, numbers it wants clarified. I always do this at the end of every uh, public hearing session, that the board pass that on to Sarah and then Sarah can pass it on to me. That's legally appropriate and it certainly helps us be more productive for you in advance of the next public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I lost my agenda here, but I assume the next item on the agenda.
Approval of minutes.
I wrote all the minutes. Does anyone have any comments on them?
No comments.
So move away a little of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other moves you for the board?
Um, I just have an update for you all. Eighty-eight Richmond Hill, which was the variance from a while ago with the sport court retaining walls, all that stuff. On Friday of last week, we did our final inspection there. They've remediated all the violations according to the variance. So took a long time, but just wanted to.
I think that's pretty quick. That was a quick turnaround, I would think.
Case closed on that one, so.
I was wondering, because I just kept seeing the basketball hoop, because that was driving me.
The hoop is still there, but, um, the court has been scooted back as. I don't know, the sun was at school when we were there, so didn't, didn't get to ask.
They were the draft.
Put the lights down, right?
The light is gone. That was item number one for us.
Okay.
That's it.
Cooper, Cooper flag.
All right, so.
Hello?
Meeting adjourned?
Yeah, it's ten fifteen. I moved to join the meeting.